I call to order the regular city council meeting from Monday, June 5th, 2023, 5:30 PM. I would ask that you please silence your cell phones or put them on vibrate to limit interruptions or distractions. Let's moving on to item number one on the agenda, and that's roll call.
Burlingame?
Here.
Evans?
Janser?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Pitner?
Padragula?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Number two, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, un 합, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have to compliment you. That sounded wonderful up here, the pledge of allegiance. So, thank you. That was awesome. Moving on to item number three, and that is the mayor's report. I guess the highlight of the last few weeks was traveling, being a part of that delegation to Shane, our sister city Norway. And I think Jill and her team from the Minot Daily kind of summed it up very well, Jill. So, thank you. It was on the front page of today's paper. I'll fill more in at a later date on that trip. Moving on to item 3.1, which is the MPO steering committee appointment. This is just a follow-up. We met as a council with Ward County Commissioners and representatives from the city of Surrey and the city of Burlington earlier in the week to discuss the municipal planning organization, the process for doing so. And I'm going to kind of open it up for the council. I would like to be able to give Kayla, our clerk, three names to be appointed to the steering committee that will select the policy board for that. So, at this time, I'll open it up for discussion. Mark?
Mr. Mayor, I would be willing to serve on that group if appointed.
So, we have Mark. Is there, I don't think we need to have a second, but I mean, is there anybody else on the council that would like to serve?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would be willing to serve as well.
Are there any, is there any discussion?
Do we want to have a, were you going to appoint a third person, like a staff member?
Well, yeah. That was going to be my next, my next one. But I did, since we had the two elected ones, if there's any, any issues or any objections, without objection, we'll have Mark Janser, Councilman Mark Janser, and Councilwoman Lisa Olson being appointed. And now, at this time, we can open it up for a member of the staff to help lead the steering committee.
So, Mr. Mayor is our city engineer, already part of that committee? Because he seems like a natural fit, and if he is, then I would recommend our city manager. But I was unclear on whether he was already kind of, already part of that.
Come on up, Lance.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, albeit all the meetings regard this, just because of the nature of what we do, if you wanted to have Harold as our designee, that'd be perfectly fine, but I'll be there no matter what.
And this is just the steering committee?
Yes.
So, the committee's going to be somewhat short-lived, but yeah. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And without, I know we're adding a lot to Harold's plate, but if Harold is willing, I would appreciate him being there as well.
I would be fine with that. I'm probably the only staff member that actually has experience sitting on a metropolitan planning organization, both in a policy board and a technical advisory committee format. So, I'd be happy to bring my experience to the table with, for that conversation.
Any objections? Hearing none. We have, we have our three appointments. Councilmembers Olson and Janser and City Manager Harold Stewart will be our members to the steering committee.
That's no problem, but do we want to make a motion on it? Because normally, it's a motion to approve the mayor appointment.
I'll make a motion to approve that, what Tom just said, what the mayor just said.
Is there a second?
A second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Burlingame?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Padragula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Moving on now to item number four on the agenda, and that's the city manager's report.
Mr. Mayor and council, included in your packet, available to the council and the public via the website, is the city manager's report as well as some attached items. Be happy to answer any questions if the council has any at this time.
Are there any questions of Harold? Hearing none?
I have nothing further.
Okay. Let's move on to item number five on the agenda, and that is the city attorney's report. Steph?
Mayor, members of the council, I submitted a written report, and I can stand for any questions at this time.
Any questions of Steph? Hearing none, we will move on to a public hearing. Item number six, a public hearing, Renaissance Zone Conditional Approval, Project M103 Bradley Shim Fessel at 1924 Third Street Northwest. This is a time, this is a time now for anyone who wishes to speak in favor of or against the item in, the item on the agenda. Second call for any comments in this public hearing. Seeing none, what are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mark?
I move to close the public hearing and approve the item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lisa. Any further discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Padragula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Burlingame?
Yes. Moving on to consent items, we have 26 items on our consent agenda. Now is the time, if there are any items that need to be pulled, you can bring them up. Are there any items? There was nothing from the council. What are the wishes of the council?
Move approval on all of the consent items.
Moved by Lisa. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mark. Um, there you go. Please call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Padragula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Burlingame?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Moving on to action items. Action item 8.1, ordinance 5840, Human Relations Committee. What are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, if we could have some clarification on the order of voting prior to us taking any action on it, I think that that would be helpful this evening. We have a lot of people in the audience, and we may get to the, get to the chance that we may be tabling this, but I think we need to kind of clear up what's happened in the last few meetings, because we've had a few motions, we've had some tabled. So, maybe if the city attorney can clarify those for us, that'll kind of set everyone in the room kind of on the right path to understanding what we're going to do.
Thank you for suggesting that.
Mayor, Elder Woman Olson, I'd be happy to do so. So, looking at the newly approved minutes from May 15th and the minutes that were previously approved from May 1st, on May 1st, Elder Woman Olson had moved the council to deny the updated wording that was passed on April 17th. This was the first instance where this was, was tabled. So, that motion was on the floor. Elderman Pitner then moved to table the second reading of the ordinance until the May 15th regular city council meeting. Underneath our ordinances, so a motion to table is then moved to the next regularly, regularly scheduled meeting. So, that motion would have been on the floor at the May 5th meeting, or May 15th meeting. At the May 15th meeting, the Human Relations Committee ordinance was moved up in the agenda, and the first motion that was immediately made was a motion by Alderwoman Evans to approve the ordinance on second reading. That motion was seconded by Alderman Padragula. The motion was then not voted on, but Alderwoman Evans made a second motion to take the item off of the table in reference to, I believe, Alderwoman Olson's motion that was already on the table. That motion was then seconded by Alderman Padragula and was carried by a roll call vote to, again, revisit the motion that Alderwoman Olson made at the May 1st meeting. There was then yet a third motion that was made and seconded, again, by Alderwoman Evans, moved to approve the Human Relations Committee ordinance on second reading, and that motion was also seconded by Alderman Padragula. So, we have a lot going on, on the floor before the council. My recommendation with these ordinances that are before the committee today is to address first, if, if that's what the council chooses to do and not table the item, address first the motion by Alderwoman Olson, which again, was to deny the updated wording that was passed on April 17th, 2023. So, that would be to retain the current language in the ordinance. And then, if that should fail, Alderwoman Evans's motions regarding passing the ordinance on second reading would remain on the table for the council's consideration to also vote on. So, while there are numerous motions here on the table, the essence of it can kind of be boiled down to the Alderman Woman Olson's motion is voting to retain the current language of the ordinance, while Alderwoman Olson's motion is to amend the current ordinance. Both motions retain the Human Relations Committee. So, it's not a vote as to whether or not the committee will come into existence or not. It's currently in our ordinances that we have a Human Relations Committee. It's just a matter of whether or not we're going to amend the ordinance consistent with the proposed ordinance that's before the council here today. So, with that, I'll stand for any questions, if there are any regarding my, my recommendation. But again, my recommendation would be to address first in time, which would be Alderwoman Olson's motion that was made on May 1st, which is to retain the current wording of the ordinance on the books. And then, should that fail, Alderwoman Evans's motions remain on the table, which is to pass the ordinance on second reading. So, with that, I'll stand for any questions on, on the procedural posture of the situation before the council.
Steve?
This is a mixture between a procedural and a policy question. I'm troubled by the fact that Alderwoman Evans isn't here. Do we know anything if she's going to be joining us by audio or in person?
She was here earlier and left.
I feel uncomfortable, you know, it was her motion. She deserves to be here, and she also should listen to what people have to say. I'm very much favor us continuing in the sense of hearing testimony from people, but I'm not terribly comfortable with taking a vote without her here. It's her, she should be able to speak in its defense and deal with any objections people might raise. I would point out that I was given that courtesy when I was gone on May 5th, May 1st, I believe it was, and the mayor was given that courtesy when he was in Norway. So, I don't know, it sounds like a fairly big and controversial issue, and, you know, if you're the one proposing something, it seems like you should be here to talk about it. So, I, I'd like to hear what people have to say, but I, I'm not sure I want to vote today about, on this.
Any other comments?
And I know there's no requirement in our ordinances that whoever proposes a motion has to be here, or that we have to have a full, full body. We do have a quorum, so I guess we could act.
What are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have a motion at this point. I am sensitive to the fact that people have come to three meetings in a row now. They've been able to speak at one. I think that there are probably people in the audience that choose, would, would like to have the opportunity to speak tonight, but I'm also sensitive to the fact that we're not only missing Alderwoman Evans, but we're also missing Alderman Pitner.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
So, we are down to, but I'm not prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
May I ask if we know where Paul is?
He's, uh, family vacation, I believe, in, in an area where he has no cellphone service, so.
Okay. So, we're missing two out of seven.
Yeah.
Well, that, that I guess would make even more reluctant. I apologize, I, my vision isn't the best, and I just completely, I could see her or not see her, but I didn't look over there. I'm sorry.
Okay. It's okay. Kayla?
This might be a question for the city attorney, but with the two motions that were on the table still from the last meeting, can there still be discussion on the item without them motioning for anything right now, correct?
Yes.
Because technically, the motion's out on the table for Alderwoman Olson's motion.
Yes.
It hasn't been pulled off the table, though.
It was pulled off the table last meeting.
But it was tabled again, wasn't it?
It was postponed, so I don't know if it has to have another, I, I don't know with a postponement if it has to have another motion to come off the table.
No. My recommendation is that Alderwoman Olson's motion is first in time, that one's on the table, that's the one being, that I would recommend the council proceeding with. Now, if the council would like to proceed with a different course of action, the council can definitely discuss that and come to a different course of action if, if it feels like that's appropriate. But my recommendation would be to first consider Alderwoman Olson's motion. It's been on the table here now for two readings, and it was the first in time. So, my recommendation would be to consider that motion first, and again, that's to retain the current language of the ordinance, and if that should fail, Alderwoman Evans's motion still remains on the table, which is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. So, my, to the discussion comment, I would leave that in the discretion of the council if it wants to garner further comment on this matter.
So, we need to take action on Lisa's motion? I mean, we could table it, or we could proceed to go forward with it.
That's correct.
Scott?
Mr. Mayor and city attorney, if we table it, that ends discussion at the point of tabling, right? So, procedurally, would our better option to be, even if we're going to table it, to allow for discussion and maybe listen to some people, and then potentially table it if, if the votes exist for that?
So, the motion to table would end the discussion, and it would then be placed on the next agenda. But if you want to entertain further comment at this meeting, you could, you could do so at this time. There's a motion on the table, and, and if the council wants to entertain further testimony and discussion on the matter, you could do it. This would be the appropriate time.
Mr. Mayor, it would be my preference to allow people to speak.
Yeah. Okay. We will, who's all here? Who wishes to speak on this issue? Please raise your hand. Who has spoken to the council on this issue in the past? Okay. What we want to do is give those who have never, who have, who have not had a chance to speak to the council, we want to provide them with an opportunity to do so. We'll limit comments to five minutes, and we will hold strict to those five minutes. But at this time, if you wish to speak either for or against the motion, now is your opportunity.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Mike Blessam. I'll switch things up a little bit because we've got the opposite motion in front of us now. So, I'm actually rising to support Councilwoman Olson's motion. I'm a resident of Southwest Minot. City governments exist to provide parks and rec services, police and fire departments, housing services, emergency medical services, municipal courts, transportation services, and public works. Instead of focusing on these services, the, the ordinance that has been proposed that would seek to change things pushes our city government in the direction of responding to the perceptions of individual community members on a wide range of issues. The original ordinance should never have been enacted way back in the 70s when it was, and this new version will do nothing to address the perceived grievances in our community. Real discrimination cases need to be brought to the proper legal authorities under federal and state law, not hashed out by an appointed committee. The purpose of this ordinance is to force people at the point of a virtual bayonet to accept and promote points of view that they may disagree with. It is designed to be divisive and to stoke turmoil in our city. It is no longer enough to say live and let live. Members of the community are being told to celebrate points of view that they may not agree with under the threat of legal action from our own city. Finally, I find the references to the Home Rule Charter in the preamble to Councilwoman Evans's proposal concerning, I can only assume that this line of thinking is being introduced to lead us down a path of overriding actions of the legislature. The Fargo School Board and its superintendent are on record stating that they will not comply with certain bills that were passed this session. At its May 18th meeting, the Fargo Human Rights Commission, that we're seeking to reactivate, its peer there, passed a statement supporting that direction of breaking the law that was signed by the governor after it was passed by our legislature. Local ordinances designed to contradict state law are not a tenable path. The makeup of the city council could change significantly next year, and I doubt that our community members want to be subject to the whims of each new council on these types of divisive issues. I urge you to support Councilwoman Olson's proposal to stick with the current language. Thank you.
My name is Dr. Matthew Richard. I'm a resident here of Minot and a pastor as well. Mr. Mayor and honorable council members, first of all, I want to thank you for your work for the city of Minot. I commend you for maintaining roads, supplying water, and funding our first responders as well as policing Minot. Again, thank you for your leadership in keeping Minot in good order and keeping Minot safe. Secondly, thank you for exploring ways to further the safety of Minot through the Human Relations Committee. Considering this committee, though, as the city council has already stated, this committee would examine ways to make Minot more affirming and welcoming. While further clarification is needed to answer the questions of affirming and welcoming of whom and what, I do not intend to explore such questions at this time. Instead, it needs to be crystal clear that, to this council, it needs to be crystal clear to this council and all who are listening, that the words affirming and welcoming are words that are embedded in the realm of morality and ethics. In other words, anytime we affirm a person, place, thing, or idea as good, beautiful, or true, we're making an ethical and moral judgment. And so, to the point, if the city council ventures down the path of affirmation and abougement, please know that you have ventured outside of your lane of public safety and public works into the realm of ethics, into the realm of philosophy and theology. While the Christian church welcomes theologically and ethically astute government officials because competent and ethically informed government officials benefit all in society, it must be maintained that the state and the Christian church are two separate spheres with two different missions. Perhaps it needs to be said as simply as possible. The state and its governing officials, such as yourselves, do not have the final authority, the final authoritative word on ethics, just as the Christian church does not have the final authoritative word on infrastructure improvements. Mr. Mayor and honorable council members, please be advised that if this council chooses to leave its lane and goes, and go into the realm of ethics and theology, the Christian church will neither applaud you nor support you when you stray or err. And if we all find ourselves repeating history, if this council finds itself using unjust force upon the spheres of the church and family through unrighteous ordinances, not only will you be denied applause, but the Christian church and her families will not, and I stress, cannot, comply. An inch will never be given. That is not a threat, is not a power play move, is a simple fact stating the church's ethics and theology are not subservient to the state, but subservient to another. City council members, considering the Human Relations Committee, again, I commend you for seeking the safety of all. I even congratulate you on your desire to be ethical and theological. However, I remind you that you are the state and not the Christian church. I admonish you, stay in your lane. Thank you.
My name is Greg Demme. I'm a resident of Ward County within the city's extraterritorial zone. I'm a pastor of Grace Baptist Church of Minot, and I'm also the chairman of the Republican Party in Legislative District 3 here in the Minot area. Mr. Mayor and honorable council members, I am speaking in support of Alderwoman Olson's current motion. I agree with much of what Pastor Matt Richard has just spoken, like him. I acknowledge the place of responsibility and honor that you hold as council members of this city. Thank you for undertaking the responsibilities of a position that many people would actively avoid, even if they were handed the opportunity. I have two items to add to what Pastor Matt has also already stated. First, the proposed reinstatement of the Human Relations Committee with its proposed expanded mission regarding anti-discrimination is completely unnecessary. Numerous federal and state laws on the books already protect people from actual discrimination, Title VII of the Civil Rights Act, the Federal Fair Housing Act, Title II of the Civil Rights Act regarding public accommodations. All these and more protect the people of their city from real acts of discrimination, not to mention the laws that protect all of us from physical violence and the like. These already existing laws make any proposed update to the city's ordinance unnecessary. Secondly, while I agree with Pastor Matthew that everyone here answers to God whether they acknowledge him that everyone here answers to God whether they acknowledge him or not, I also want to add that as you fill these positions of honor and responsibility, please remember that you have not been elected to rule over us. According to our national and state constitutions, you have been elected to represent us. As pastors, not only will we not comply when you implement unjust or immoral legislation, and not only do we train our congregations to do the same, we also train them that it is our and their civic responsibility as citizens using only lawful means to remove from office any elected official who is ineffective or who tries to enforce immoral or unjust legislation upon the citizens. I echo the caution that was offered earlier. Please stay in your lane.
Mayor Ross and members of the city council, I am Marla Fisher from southwest Minot, and I am speaking to support Lisa Olson's motion and reject the proposed Human Relations Committee ordinance. If each and every human is to be seen and treated with acceptance and respect, of which I agree, the most effective way to accomplish this goal is to remove labels. We, the people of Minot, are people. We are not our labels. In this proposed ordinance, I see 25 labels listed in paragraph one. Labels do not create inclusivity. Not everyone can be included in a given set of labels. Who are we leaving out? Meanwhile, some of these labels hold belief systems that directly contradict one another. Which brings me to the proposed educational programs and activities in paragraph one. Who is funding these programs and activities? Who decides the content? Who does the educating? What if one person's perception of the education program is that it's discriminatory? Who will decide whether that perception is right or wrong? What is the protocol for handling discrepancies? The unintended consequence of the wording of this proposal is that I see it causing unintended divisions within our community. Not only is this proposal unnecessary and a form of government overreach, but it holds the potential for exclusion and divisiveness. It is not what is best for Minot. Thank you.
Thank you, Consul. Jeff Hooversen coming in as a pastor of a church. And I'm not going to give a speech because I stand in agreement with the previous pastors. But just wanted to add just a humble request. I know you tabled the discussion a couple times, for good reason, probably. But just a request out of courtesy, if you would, can do this, just kind of find out who's actually going to show up at the next council meeting. Ahead of time, make public notice. Because if there is somebody that you know is going to be gone, then it would be, you know, just out of courtesy, it'd be kind of nice for the people to know that ahead of time. And that way, they can make their plans in the summer accordingly. So just wanted to make that request. Thank you, council.
Good evening, mayor and councilpeople. I know I have spoken before, but I am not certain that this is going to be tabled. I do recall other instances in the past where such an issue has been taken without Carrie Evans here. And so I want to have my say in case this is not eventually tabled by this council. Deb Hoffarth, I am a resident of the city of Minot. Since the last meeting, I've had an opportunity to look at Human Relations ordinances in more detail and the committee. And again, I want to remind everyone that this is a committee that's advisory in nature. The purpose is to promote the acceptance and respect for diversity through educational programs and activities, to discourage all forms of discrimination based on actual or perceived race, color, religion, philosophical beliefs, sex, pregnancy, parental status, political affiliation, intimate partner violence, sexual assault survivor status, source of income, genetic information, sexual orientation, gender identity or expression, housing status, military veteran status, national origin, age, immigration status, mental or physical disabilities, and marital status. There's really, in my mind, really nothing controversial of this. This is actually the law as it stands in the state and federal jurisdictions. And in my mind, it's really just providing basic human decency to the employees and the citizens of the city of Minot. It's not controversial. And so I stand here as a Christian person in opposition to what these pastors have told you. The complaints that are being made are only against one sector of people. That's LGBTQIA+ people, trans individuals. That is not what this ordinance is about. This is about protecting a wide sector of people. And I'll remind you, you don't just represent religious people. You represent a wide circle of diverse people that live within this city. I told you before that I'm a parent of an LGBTQIA individual. We both live in Minot. We both pay property taxes in Minot. We both work in Minot. Why, what would you do if your kid was on the other end of this discussion? Would you stand silently by and say, "Well, the old ordinance is good enough"? Well, frankly, I don't want to live in 1976. I want to live in 2023. Do I tell my kid, "Leave Minot or stay"? You're not valued here. You're vilified here by several of your community members. You should leave. You should pack up, get out of here. What do I tell my other kids who are also concerned about their sibling? I have one who's ready to leave the state immediately upon graduating from college, not only for other opportunities, but also because of these long-held views that people in North Dakota don't value diverse people. They don't value anyone other than someone who maybe looks just like me or maybe looks just like the mayor. Would you stand by silently? Would you tell your kids to stay? Do I even want my kids to stay? If their contributions aren't valued, it's hard to ask them to stay here near me. And I hope no one ever has to know the feelings that a parent has to watch as their LGBTQIA+ child has to navigate all of these issues publicly, both here in this city and during the past legislative session. There's a fear that people won't hire him, that people are going to fire him, that the government will criminalize their very existence and not provide them with what other taxpayers are receiving. So I say, let's let this Human Relations Committee be there to support conversations that provides leadership in civil rights, promote diversity, identify concerns with civil rights, and encourage adherence to both federal and state law. The narrative being pushed here is just a sad reflection of people's hatred. It's not a reflection of caring for all people in your community. It's really just being caring about these people who think just like you. And we're so much bigger than that. We have the Air Force Base. We have the college. We have people who are moving in here for jobs. Let's keep that going. Help me keep my kids here. Help me keep your kids here. Let me keep, help me keep all the kids we can, the young adults we can, here in Minot. Let them apply for our jobs. Let us help them. Let them help us boost our economy.
Ms. Hoffarth, if you can just wrap up your last sentence.
Really, I just want them to stay. So there's nothing controversial about this. If you don't pass the revised ordinance, you guys are going to be the biggest Greg that your social media people talk about. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Tiffany Fettig. I'm a lifelong resident of the Minot. I live in Minot now, but a lifelong resident of the Minot area. I'm here tonight to encourage you to support Lisa Olson's motion. Currently, we have a number of items that govern discrimination in our country, state, and city. Consider Title IX of the Civil Rights Act, ADA, Title VII of the Federal Fair Housing Act, and other numerous federal laws and articles in the North Dakota Constitution governing discrimination. When was the last time a city had an issue where the existing ordinance and existing Human Relations Committee was needed and not sufficient? Is there a hole that needs to be addressed? Or are we just looking to try to regulate perceived discrimination? I believe that if you pass this, if you pass a new revised ordinance, you as a city council will create a committee and an ordinance that actually causes issues. When specific people groups are named, like intimate partner violence or sexual assault survivor status, you are bringing private information into the public hands and groups. Please also consider, by changing the existing ordinance and committee, you are excluding all those that don't fit in the listed category. Quite honestly, I feel like I might be one of them. It is my belief that our discrimination laws and practices, that if our discrimination laws and practices are broken or outdated, they should be fixed at the state or federal level. Does a city really want to create a new ordinance and be involved in discrimination by using the Home Rule Charter? It is unnecessary, I believe it is unnecessary and inappropriate for the council to allow a committee to be formed and revised, have meetings as often as deemed necessary by the chair or vice chair of the committee, and use city dollars to pay for a city clerk to record the minutes, be present at the meetings, the mayor to deal with the committee, and for issues that do not exist in large, and further push any future issues represented by the city attorney using additional city tax dollars. Finally, please consider the wording of the proposed, the proposed item by Evans and the proposed ordinance of perceived discrimination. You may perceive that I don't think you're an intelligent person, or that you are. Is your perception of what I think fact? Most likely not. Have I violated you by perceiving something? Thinking and acting are two different things. If there is an action, it would be covered and protected by the current ordinance, state, and federal law. Perceiving something is not the same as actually taking action and violating someone. In closing, I think there are much better ways that Minot can promote their community in a positive way than to say, "We are warm and welcoming to people. We even have a committee to promote that we don't discriminate" on the basis of things that are already covered in state and federal law. Finally, thank you for considering and listening to the citizens' point of view tonight.
Hello. My name is Josiah Royce. I don't have any prepared thing to talk about, but I'm glad I came because I got to witness what everybody else is here to talk about. And I'm also in support of Ms. Olson's proposal. But like I said, nothing scripted. I just want to get real for a second here. So I'm here to promote freedom. And anytime that a person's perception and things like that can be coerced under the power of the law, that is damaging to freedom. And also, in just being real, I would think that, you know, if you want to work in a place with maybe like-minded people, people that support you in whatever you're into, wouldn't you rather know? Instead of them giving a fake smile and saying, "Yes, I support this and that and the other," because I'm not allowed to say otherwise. See, I like having common ground with my friends, and there's things that we don't all agree upon. But, you know, on a base level, you know, there's diversity even in friends. So to ignore the, or rather to counter the comment from the gal before this last one that spoke, I forget her name, about welcoming diversity, there is a whole lot of diversity even within my own family. Okay, and that causes some, you know, trouble maybe at holiday times and whatnot. You know, it's the same thing for everybody. But it's honest, and we all know what each other's stance is on various things. And that doesn't mean anybody hates each other. This is not about hatred versus love. This is not about anything of the sort. So just to bring some, I mean, maybe, you know, unpopular opinion and uncommon sense, whatever it might be called, I would urge you to basically, in short of other words, dial it back. Because freedom is under attack across this country in ways that wouldn't be important to discuss here at a city council, but on a national level, on a state level, freedoms are being eliminated every single year. I mean, North Dakota, just for example, I don't know if you guys know this. Of all the things that we're talking about promoting and stuff with all this love campaign and whatnot, amongst things that are illegal to do in one's bedroom, are you aware that in North Dakota, it is still illegal to fall asleep in bed with your shoes on? That was a shocker to me. And I'll tell you, I've done it. But that was in South Dakota. So that was a close one. But, you know, there's already probably hundreds, if not thousands, of laws that we're not made aware of. We don't have to pass a test to take. And then that's pretty easy. Entrapment is probably the wrong terminology. I'm not an attorney. But pretty easy trap to be like, "Ah, gotcha. Guess what? This was made illegal five years ago. You didn't have to be informed about it. You're not informed about it, but now you're guilty for it." And I think we need a lot less of that. So again, in closing, just let me say, I'm here to promote freedom. If somebody wants to work with people that are like-minded, they can ask them. They can ask them and make their own judgment and assessment as to whether or not the person's being honest. I'm boldly honest, clearly. Doesn't make me very popular in some circles, but at least you know where I'm coming from. And I think we should promote truth, honesty, sincerity, and freedom here in Minot. And I think that would just go over much better. That way, people don't have to be surprised if they get some whispers in the background that, "Oh, somebody's not actually in support of, you know, me and my diverse group and all that, that and the other." It's like, just let it be. Let people be who they are, and that's including everybody. It doesn't have to be a competition of any sorts. Just let it be. Fewer laws. And on the note about the infrastructure and water and stuff, I'm a little bit curious about the water treatment plant, fluoride going into the water systems and that killing testosterone and reproductive abilities. But that's for another time. But I'm curious. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and honorable council men and women, for the record, my name is Jay Fisher. I live in southwest Minot. I am also an elected representative of District Five in the House of Representatives. I agree with much of what's been said. I agree with Councilwoman Olson's amendment tonight. We have plenty of federal and state laws. And if I've learned anything in six years in the legislature, there's words have meaning. And two that I come up with often that we, are unintended consequences. And we deal with these oftentimes. I am here this evening. I would like to, with permission, to read a letter from a constituent that was unable to be here. May I read something on behalf of someone else? And this is from Jim Olson, 233 Service Drive, Minot, North Dakota. And this is prior to this latest, I'm going to read it verbatim, but so it'd be different than agreeing with Councilwoman Olson's amendment. But here's the words. "I write to encourage you to reject proposed changes to language in the city's Human Relations Committee ordinance. Further, I encourage you to repeal the ordinance altogether. The laws of city, state, and nation already provide strong protections for all persons in the nation. Those laws should be enforced when there are violations. I oppose having the city be in the business of promoting the acceptance of any sliver of the population. Rather, the city should enforce ordinances and laws that assure every person equal protection and equal opportunity. Those laws should in no way be concerned with feelings or outcomes. Feelings are unique to individuals and cannot be subject to legal enforcement. Outcomes are determined by the ethical and legal behavior of each individual. No committee of citizens can make judgments about what affected those outcomes. If a citizen is demonstrably harmed or limited by the illegal actions of others, those others must face the consequences prescribed by existing laws. There's no need for another layer of bureaucracy to become involved in perceived grievances." Thank you for the time, and it's been said by other speakers here. I was, we had over 900 and some bills that we heard. So we pass a lot of things into state legislatures. So we pass a lot of things in the state legislature. I have three pages of things that were mentioned here about already laws and ordinances and things on the books. So we don't need to do something else. Words mean something. Unintended consequences. Please don't go there. Thank you for the time.
Any further comments from the public?
Good evening. Honorable Mayor Ross, members of the Minot City Council. My name is Jeffrey Case. I live in northwest Minot, North Dakota. I am here to support Councilwoman Olson's motion. My comment is very brief. I believe it is not the responsibility of the state or the culture to impinge upon the Christian church or religion. It is not the church that must come into alignment with the trends of the culture. It is the function of religion, the church, to admonish the culture and encourage actions of Christian virtue. Because of the divisiveness that has grown exponentially in this country over the last five or 10 years, I as a Christian am now being demonized and called a bigot because there are certain views that I don't share. I'm among the diversity. Is that not true? My concern is that this may be a rush to find a solution to a problem that doesn't exist. Thank you for your time.
Last call for any further comments from the public. If not, I will bring it back. Oh, we might have one more. Nope, nope. You had your opportunity, sir. If that's, no other comments, I'll bring this back up to the dais for any more further comments or what are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Lisa.
I'd like to address a few of the statements that were made. One was that there have been comments that have been derogatory to certain groups of people. And while I don't doubt that that has occurred in the community, it has not happened from this dais. So, I want to make sure that everyone in the audience realizes that, that our goal in all of this is to represent everyone because, yes, whether you voted for us or didn't vote for us, we do represent you. We represent everyone in the community. So, the motion that I made a few weeks ago was to be inclusive and not exclusive. To clarify my motion, my motion is not to delete the ordinance, but to keep the current ordinance, ask the mayor to stand up the committee, since the committee has not met in many, 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 many years, and have a diverse group of people come together and bring us some recommendations. I would hope that when that diverse group of people met, that they would be able to find some items that they felt were important, that they could bring to us, and they could also recommend how the ordinance should read in the future. So I'd like to give the power to the people by having that committee stood up. So, those are my words. Thank you.
Anything else? What are the wishes of the council?
Oh, Steve, sorry.
Since two of the seven are absent, I just feel uncomfortable taking a vote on something which has generated so much discussion and debate. I think it's also fair that those two who are not here be accountable in a sense and explain what their votes are about if they choose to do that. I personally haven't sorted out exactly how I vote. I think I have a direction in mind, and I would feel an obligation to explain that, my vote, so people understand that. In fact, I've made some notes of things I want to say. I don't necessarily want to force the others who aren't here to that same standard, but I think it's only fair that people, you know, explain and have the chance to publicly take a position on this important matter. I know that's another postponement, but if two out of seven are gone, I think that's pretty significant. I think all of us should maybe not be required, but certainly have the opportunity to weigh in on this and to vote and vote publicly.
Is that a motion, Steve?
I think it is, yes.
Is there a second?
Just a point of clarification. Is this a motion to table till the next meeting?
It is until the entire council is present.
Okay, so a motion to table until the entire council is present. So we'll include it on the agenda for the next meeting? And if the council is not all present, the intent would be, do you want it removed from the agenda if we learn that a council member won't be present?
Well, I think if people feel strongly enough that they want to come and talk to us, I think they should have that right. And we can certainly, if nothing else, watch the video of it and read whatever they might present. I think it's very important that people have the opportunity to speak and be heard.
Okay, so even if the full council's not present at the next meeting, you do want the item to remain on the agenda for comment from the public?
Yes.
Okay.
May I ask a question, please, Mayor?
We have finished our public comments on this for this evening.
I don't understand what happened, and I'd like to ask clarification of what just happened.
We took public comment, and now we're discussing what to do next.
But I'm not sure what you were taking public comment about. You advertised that this was going to be a second reading of a motion that had already been approved a couple of months ago. Now we have a totally different motion to not even, to lay aside the approval that was given like about a month ago and go back to a motion or to an ordinance that we had a long time ago. I don't understand how we could change the agenda when it was advertised to be a second reading of a motion to expand the motion that the committee that had already been approved once before. How did we get from the first reading of a motion to expand and reinstate an old committee to now all of a sudden saying...
There was a motion, there was a motion at the second, when we had the original second reading of the ordinance for the second reading and possible passing. Councilwoman Olson made a motion to keep the old committee standing and not move forward, and not move forward with this. That motion was tabled. And it was tabled till the next meeting, when we didn't have a full council at that next meeting. And we afforded the member who was missing to put that motion, Councilwoman Olson's motion, on the table. We kept it on the table until the following meeting. Now, at the following meeting, there was another council member missing. I was missing. And so, Councilman Padraigula made a motion to postpone the vote until the mayor returned and could be a part of the meeting. That's where we're at tonight. And tonight, we could have taken, we could take action tonight on whether or not to go with, to go with the second reading and approve that, or table it until we get a full council to have a full discussion and to hear comments and views and opinions from the council before a full council would take a vote on whether we move this forward or we go back to the, go back to the previous committee. That's where it's at. Nothing was changed. Nothing was changed. The advertising that was out there is exactly what we've been doing. We haven't, we haven't, we haven't done anything different.
I don't understand, Your Honor, where Councilwoman Olson's motion came into...
The motion happened, what, three meetings ago? Two meetings ago. She made the motion to do that two meetings ago. So a month ago. She made a motion. And it was put on the table, meaning no action was going to be taken until a full council was here to deal with it.
So that's going to be tabled again tonight?
We're in the discussion. Until you came up to the podium, we were discussing that.
Of whether we table Councilwoman Olson's motion?
Yes, yes.
To go back to the old one without any...
No, we're, the question on the floor right now is whether or not to table this until we get a full council back.
But what is this? I don't understand what we're tabling.
Table, Councilwoman Olson's motion to keep, to keep the old committee standing up and not move forward with the proposed new committee structure.
But that wasn't discussed two weeks ago.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Any further discussion? We are looking for a second to table.
I will second to table.
Scott, second. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I very hesitantly will vote to go along with this motion tonight. However, I believe that it is in our best interest to vote on this next month, no matter who is here, because I think we have just drug this out long enough. We've asked people to come to many meetings. It's causing more division than is what anyone would ever hope for. And so, even if someone is absent next time, I would hope that we would move forward on voting.
Any further comments from the council? Nothing further? Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm a little bit torn because a couple of meetings ago, you know, I was very, very strongly in favor of waiting until everybody was here. And so, I'm going to vote for this motion to table. But I have to tell you, you know, I understand, you know, how schedules happen, but I agree with Alderman Olson. I think if we're in the same boat next meeting, I think we should take a vote and get this handled. So, I guess, fair warning to me and everybody else on the council that we should try to be here. And, you know, if nothing else, to get this issue moved forward. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Scott. I just want to say that I understand every, everybody that wants to get this over with. I understand, and I appreciate the people in the audience that would like to have it over with. I also think it's not a bad thing if government moves slow. It probably is supposed to move slow and not be super reactionary. So, giving this a chance to get the right people here, giving us a chance to listen to constituents, giving us a chance to think through this is fine. So, I'm fine with, that's why I made the motion to postpone it, is it's okay for things to go slow sometimes.
I've got to say one more thing. You know, the more I sit here and listen to what is said by one side of the room and the other, the less confidence I have that this is something that we can solve with a committee. You know, last meeting, when we tabled this discussion, two groups went out into the atrium area and kind of huddled apart from each other. My suggestion would be that two groups, if they go out the door tonight, might want to talk to each other. I think that's where it starts. And if, and if, and if this committee gets resurrected or set up in whatever form, that's where it has to start. And this committee hasn't been active for decades. So, waiting another week to figure out what's the right thing isn't going to cause terrific harm. So, I'll vote to postpone it one more time.
Any other comments? You know, I, it's been, it's been a long few weeks. And, you know, as I said before, that's the reason we have two readings of an ordinance. That's how important it is, that we just can't do it in one reading. And we split that up so we can take some public feedback, so we can get more eyes looking on the situation. Where I would, and I'll support tabling it because I believe we need to have a full council here to discuss this. But I'm also in favor of having people come together. And I'm in favor of standing up the old committee. We can have up to 20 members on that committee. And I would, I would be in support of standing up that committee. And we have 40 applications from residents to sit on that committee. And I would, I would be in full support of having every council member appoint three to that committee out of this stack and have them get together, discuss it. And if there's any changes that need to be made, it comes from that committee. And we would consider a recommendation from that committee. I think that's, you know, I campaigned on that, on more eyes. And together, we can. And together, we are. And we need to stay together. So I'm going to vote in support to table this. I'm disappointed that Alderwoman Evans was here and decided not to take part in this public comment period. But, I also respect her, and I, she wants the same thing we want from Minot. We just have a different road of getting there. But, I want her here as well as I want Alderman Pittner here as well. So, I'm going to support tabling this motion. Steve?
If I could follow up on that, in addition to trying to get some compromise, or at least some dialogue on this issue, I think it's very important. I would encourage Lisa to maybe sit down with Carrie and see if we can, if you two can hash out some sort of compromise on this. I'm a little reluctant to support reviving the old committee because it would have 21 people on it. It seems a little cumbersome. I'm also concerned about the requirement that it meet on a monthly basis. That seems excessive. And to be honest with you, I think the old committee was kind of predisposed to the idea that there were going to be grievances and that they were somehow going to be resolved by the committee. I think that puts a needlessly negative spin on all this, that this is some sort of grievance collector and resolution mechanism. One of the things I like about the new proposal is it's a, hopefully should provide a forum for people to talk, to learn, to listen, and not have it skewed toward creating a problem or accentuating a problem, which may or may not be there. There may be problems, but if anything, I see the old committees being too skewed toward conflict. So if there were some changes made in that, I guess I could, I could support Lisa's motion. And I don't know if Carrie and Paul would, but, you know, I think, I think things can be tweaked a bit, and we could set an example for collaboration.
Thank you.
In response, I feel that any conversation that Alderwoman Evans and I would have, or any conversation I would have with anyone up on the dais, needs to be held in a public meeting.
It's fine.
Anything further from the council? If not, the motion is to table?
The motion is to table until the entire council is present, but to put on the agenda to allow public comment. Is that correct, Alderman?
Yes.
And just for clarification, the item being tabled is my motion, correct?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
If not, please call the rule.
Padraigula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Burlingame?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Moving on to item 8.2, the 2022 Pavement Management Plan Final Report. What are the wishes of the council? We'll wait, we'll...
Do these people know they're missing out on pavement discussion?
I mean, I don't know that we could have, could have found a more exciting topic.
I'll call a five-minute recess.
Should have I?
Afford people to exit city council chambers.
I don't know why they all would wanna leave before this.
We really, right? That's what I said.
Let's bring people together, Lance.
Yes, it's a real five minute. I actually am gonna go that way, too.
Are you going to the burnout or whatever? Are you doing the?
Go ahead, they're in agreement with what we're doing.
I saw the bulletin, I was kind of intrigued. Have to come and take part. Yeah, you guys were, you guys were the bomb, so.
So does the issue next to us take debit cards?
I'm gonna go get a soda quick.
Next item has a presentation on it?
If it doesn't, I might have.
Is there a presentation?
6:40.
Hey, it's payment, I vote yeah.
So what, she's cutting it down to what, 60 slides? 64 to 60.
Way to go.
I think so.
Can't believe all those people left before pavement discussion. Okay, I'll call us back in session at 6:42, moving on to action item 8.2, the 2022 pavement management plan final report. What are the wishes of the council?
So, is it a proper thing in order to allow Lance to talk to move for approval?
I, that's what the, the direction should be, move for approval, get a second, we open for discussion, and then I'd, I'd invite Mr. Meyer to take.
All right.
Question. It says to receive and to file the payment. I mean, we're, we're just taking this and...
So this is just an informational? Okay. Then we don't need a motion. So let's take the report, let's get the report, and then we'll accept and file it.
Good morning. Thank you for giving us some attention tonight, just to give an update on the state of our streets. So with us tonight via Teams is Dr. Sadef Khosrabefar with IMS. They've, they've done a lot of great work for us here on this project, and she's gonna get into, just explain briefly how we went about the process, and then, like I've communicated to you here recently, just what our street conditions are, some funding levels and programs we need to talk through. And at the end, if you have any questions, please ask Sadef or myself, and we'd be happy to answer them. So, Sadef, thanks for sticking with us. Go ahead and take her out. Thanks.
Thank you. So should I share my screen, or are you going to share the slides on your end? And do you hear me?
Yes, share your screen, please.
Okay, perfect. You all see my screen?
Yes.
Perfect. All right, so yes, so I just wanted to give some updates about the project that we did with Lance and Matthew at the city, and provide you with the state of the streets in Minot. For this presentation, I'll talk a little bit about pavement management in general and how pavements perform, and then I'll get into the results, show you the outcome of the study, which is what is the outcome of your current budget and how much money you would need to spend in the next five years to reach your goals in pavement management. So before I get into the results, I just want to provide you an overview of pavement performance. When we talk about pavement performance, it is really two aspects. The structural components, which is the capability of the pavement to withstand the traffic and environmental conditions without developing substantial distresses. And then the functional performance is about providing a smooth, comfortable, safe ride to the riders. And typically, these two aspects of pavement performance affect each other. For example, if you have a bumpy road, then that is going to cause more dynamic loads on the pavement, and that is going to cause more substantial distresses such as alligator cracking and potholes throughout the pavement. And then if you have potholes and alligator cracking, that is going to also affect the ride or the functional performance of the pavement. So these are two aspects of the pavement performance typically go hand in hand, and they affect each other. So with pavement management, really what we want to do is to provide you decision-makers with some tools and methods to be able to use your budget and funding in the best way possible. Typically, in this process, which is kind of an interactive process, we start with some objectives, your policies, your goals, and then we do an assessment of the pavement conditions throughout the network to get an idea of where we are as far as the conditions. And then we do some analysis. We run some numbers to figure out how the pavements are going to perform in the next few years, how much budget we are going to need to reach our goals. And then in a few years, we come back and then we reassess. We update our goals, we check the conditions to see whether they're performing the way we were expecting them to perform, and then we run new plans, develop a, a five-year plan, a multi-year plan for how pavements are going to deteriorate and how, what, what we are going to do in the network of the pavements. So when, it may seem a little bit crucial when I say right treatment at the, for the right pavement at the right time, but it is really what we are trying to do with pavement management. Pavements typically, they start with that PCI of 100, then you construct them, and then they, they start to slowly deteriorate over time. Then at some point, when they are still in satisfactory condition, the rate of deterioration picks up. You, at that point, you may see that pavements are starting to deteriorate at a faster rate, and you may see about 40% in their quality, 40% dropping their quality in just 15% of their lifetime. So typically with pavement management, we want to be as proactive as possible. We want to tackle those pavements when they're still in good condition, similar to how you would be maintaining your car or teeth. You want to put money into preservation of the pavements, into maintaining those pavements that are in good condition, because the ones that are already, have already deteriorated, they have already lost their window of opportunity. There, you need to do a reconstruction on them, and typically those reconstruction projects are significantly expensive, and by the time you reconstruct one mile of road, then four miles of other roads are going to deteriorate to that level that they need reconstruction, and you will be always playing catch-up. But if you really focus on those pavements that are in good condition first, then you would be able to get the most return on the investment, because you would be able to keep those good pavements in good condition for a longer time and stretch their pavement life. And then through VIP, through grant funding or some selective projects, you can tackle those ones that have already lost their window of opportunity and require a reconstruction. Now that I have provided a little bit of a background on how pavements perform and pavement management, I'll just go over what we did in the network. We deployed this unit, this is a state-of-the-art technology. It has 3D laser cameras on the back, they have 4,000 lasers on them, and we can capture the width and depth of all the cracks on the surface of the pavement. And through this equipment, we can capture different type of distresses, alligator cracking, rutting, longitudinal and transverse cracking, block cracking, patching, bleeding, edge cracking, distortions, weathering. And then we follow an ASTM standard, it is called ASTM D6433, to capture the PCI or the pavement condition index. In addition to the, to the surface distresses, we also capture the right quality with this unit. We capture the longitudinal profile, and we can see how bumpy the road is, so we can measure that roughness and right quality of the pavement. You may consider that to be, are, whether you're going to spill your coffee when you're driving or not. So that's the right quality of the pavement. So that was what we captured on the surface, but on your arterials and collectors, we also deployed another unit. It's called the fast falling weight reflectometer. It's again a non-destructive test where we pound the pavement, we apply a load, we are trying to simulate the load of a truck traffic. And using this technology, we can really see, see deeper, we can see what is the structural integrity of the pavement, how different layers are performing. With the previous unit that I was showing, you're just basically looking at the surface. And some say by the time you have cracks and potholes on the surface, it's just too, already too late. So with this unit, you can be even more proactive and really figure out how the pavement is performing from the structural standpoint, and what is the structural integrity of the pavement, because that ultimately, if the pavement is not structurally adequate, it is going to deteriorate faster, and you are going to have significant distresses over time. So with this unit, we evaluated that, we had to capture some traffic information, but we worked with the city to get that, and then with this unit, we can also do a pavement design. But for the sake of this study, we came up with an index called structural index. So with all of these different components, we, basically we captured that PCI, which probably you're more familiar with, that is the ASTM D6433 standard, that is the surface distresses. So we got the PCI, but we also looked at that right quality or the roughness index or RI, and we also, for your arterials, captured that SI or structural index. And then for your local roads, we looked at coming up with a blended overall index for each segment of the road, which is 85% PCI plus 15% right index. And then for your arterials and collectors, where we captured all three indices, we came up with a blended overall condition index, OCI, using all three, incorporating 50% from the PCI component, and then 25% from RI or roughness index, and 25% from SI. So, just to give you an idea of what is an OCI of a failed pavement, how, how a pavement in failed condition, a poor condition, a good condition looks like. These are a few examples. Luckily, this is not a minor street. This is a pavement in failed condition, it's full of potholes, a lot of, the pavement's surface area has come apart, it's already a lost cause, it, it requires a reconstruction pretty much. So luckily, this is not a minor road, but it has an OCI of eight, it's a failed pavement. This one is a, is slightly in a better condition, it is in serious condition, it again requires either a partial or a full reconstruction. It has a longitude, it has alligator cracking, a major part of the pavement has come, has raveled off, and the edge cracking has developed on the edge of the pavement, and potholes are starting to develop. And a huge component of this pavement has already been patched, so it has received a lot of structural patching in, before, in advance. So, but the pavement is in serious condition, and it, again, it requires either a partial or a full reconstruction. The segment is slightly in a better condition because it has already got, received a lot of structural patches throughout, but even though there are some patching, you can see that the cracks have also even reflected through the, through the patched area. So that's again an indicator of a base failure, and probably even if you kneel off the surface of the, this, surface of this road, you will... you will notice that the asphalt layer is in a very poor condition. You have to basically completely mill off and remove the asphalt layer. You probably would need to do a lot of structural patches on the base before being able to bring this pavement to its perfect PCI of 100. It is full of distortions. The ride is probably really poor. So this is a perfect example of a pavement in a very poor condition. This one is in poor condition, slightly better. This one, it has some structural patches, some longitudinal and transverse cracking, but the cracks are not extended throughout the entire surface. This pavement is probably going to benefit from a Milan overlay. On a pavement like this, you can probably mill off the surface, take care of some localized failures and then put a new surface. And then that will give you another 10, 12 years on the pavement's performance. This one is an example of a fair pavement, OCI of 55 to 70. This is another example of a pavement that would benefit from a Milan overlay. We can see that the ride is not really good. There are some distortions on the pavement. There are some rotting, some localized distortions on the pavement. So it looks like the ride is not very good. And then it also has longitudinal and transverse cracking throughout. But again, this pavement probably is going to benefit from a rehab activity such as a Milan overlay with some structural patching. Then here, I have an example, 13th Street. This is a perfect example of a pavement in satisfactory condition. This would benefit from preventive maintenance work. You can continue on taking care of any localized failures such as patching. And as you can see, there are some localized patchings that have been done on this pavement, on this piece of pavement. You can do crack sealing on this and then do something like a micro-surfacing or some very thin overlay on top. And that will seal the pavement and it will provide it with the longevity that it needs. And then this is an example of a good pavement. It's a concrete pavement. It basically has no distresses, OCI of 99. It has a smooth ride, no distresses, and it is going to last for a good time, about 20 years or so, with routine maintenance. In a few years, it is probably going to be a good candidate for sealing the joints. And if there are some cracks that are being developed, then you have to do some preventive maintenance on this one. But again, it's a great candidate for that type of preventive maintenance work. So with that, this is how the different indices perform against each other. The PCI, which is probably the number you're most familiar with. You've been doing PCI surveys according to that ASTM D6433 standard throughout the life since 2019. I've worked with Lance even on a project before this one. The average condition, the average PCI in the network is a 79. It is satisfactory. And a lot of pavements, most of the pavements are in that satisfactory and good condition. However, when we were looking at the right index, it appears that the right quality is not as great. It is still not too bad, an average right index of 63. But you do have about 40% of your pavements with a poor or very poor or serious right quality or right index. And then the Structural Index, which was just done on your arterials and collectors, that's again, in a really good condition, SI of 77. And the majority of your pavements has an SI of above 85, which is an indicator that they're in good condition from the structural standpoint, which is super important. Because when you have pavements that have a low structural index, that is going to, those pavements are going to deteriorate faster. They're going to develop more cracks faster and you have to basically do a heavier rehab activity on them. Then, as I mentioned, we incorporated these individual indices into one blended OCI or overall index. This is how the OCI looks like. The OCI is a 76 right now. And the backlog is 39.7. By backlog, I'm referring to those pavements that have an OCI below 75. So you typically want to have all of your pavements in satisfactory and good condition. Because when the pavements are in that condition, you can do preventive maintenance, preservation, and you can maintain them in good condition for a longer time through cheap, inexpensive preventive maintenance activities. But then when they're in poor or very poor or serious or failed condition, then those are, those require higher investments. Those require Milan overlay, reconstruction, cement stabilization and all the heavy lifting. So the idea, the goal is try to push this graph as much as possible to the right side so that you can have more pavements in satisfactory and good condition and less and less in very poor and very poor condition. All right. So now that you have an idea of how the current conditions look like, let's look at some budget analysis and project planning. When we do this type of budget analysis, of course, you know, we know the funding is not unlimited. The funding is not zero. So we are looking at different what-if scenarios. We looked at the effect of your current funding, which is about $8 million on the pavement conditions in five years. We also looked at different goals. We looked and to see what is the required budget, for example, to achieve an OCI of 80 and reduce the backlog. Because again, you do have a low backlog, 40% in that with PCI below 75. But the goal is to reduce that backlog as much as possible. So during this type of analysis, we do a lot of assumptions. First and foremost, you need to have a unit rate for different type of rehab activities. And if you look into this table, it is very eye-opening. You can see that those preventive activities that I was showing, that I was talking about earlier, which are the ones that I'm showing in green, such as chip seal, epoxy, micro seal, those cost a lot less than Milan overlay. They range from $5 to $12 per square yard. But then when you get to that Milan overlay range, then that's kind of costing about $40 to $65. And then when we get to that level, that it's even too late for Milan overlay, we are looking at costs around $90 to $100 per square yard. When we do this type of pavement management work and this type of budget analysis, I need to mention, we set different levels of priorities. For example, we put a higher priority on pavements that get more traffic. Arterials always get the highest priority. The other thing is that we don't look at the worst first planning. Because again, if you go off and just sort the pavement conditions by the worst first and try to pick the ones that are in worst condition, by the time you fix one mile of the one that is in worst condition, you have four miles dropping and declining to that very poor or serious condition requiring reconstruction. So we try to optimize the funding by following something called cost of deferal. So we try to select segments that are in their sweet window of opportunity, where we can have the highest return on investment. So for example, if you are, you have a pavement that is a good candidate for a thick overlay and you defer that maintenance, the incremental cost is about 100%. But for example, if a street slips from a thin overlay to a moderate overlay, then the penalty is about only 25%. So we try to really optimize that cost of defer. So just looking at your cost, you know, if a pavement segment requires a micro seal, we want to capture that before it's already too late for micro sealing and it requires a Milan overlay. If it requires a thick overlay, we want to capture that before it is too late and it requires a reconstruction. So that cost of deferal is really important when we do this type of optimizations. So now some results. First, I'm showing two unrealistic scenarios. The blue is the fix-all, the unlimited budget. If you have unlimited funding and you can treat every segment of the road, you need about $100 million in five years. And then if you do that, the OCI is going to be 85. The backlog is going to be zero. But of course, nobody has unlimited funding. And then the other hand, if you do nothing, then the OCI is going to drop to 68 and the backlog is going to increase to 53%. So both of these are just to give you some upper and lower boundaries. But of course, our goal is to provide you with some realistic what-if scenarios. And one of them is your current funding. With your current funding, which is $8 million and the previously planned VIP projects that we have put in at zero cost to the agency, we are looking at maintaining the current conditions. So I think the OCI right now is 76. The OCI is expected to stay at around that 76 number in five years. But the backlog is expected to decrease to 24%. Right now, you have around 40% backlog. But if you want to further improve the current conditions and hit a target of OCI of 80, then we are looking about doubling up your budget. 16.7 million, around $17 million per year. It's something that we recommend you spend to hit that OCI of 80. And that is going to result in a much lower backlog of only 12%. But in that way, we are basically able to really push that graph that I was showing earlier to the right. Here, you see the current conditions versus the post-rehab conditions. This is with your current funding of $8 million, which is going to reduce the backlog from 40% to 24%. It is going to keep the current conditions. But even with your current funding and the CIP projects that you have, you can have, you're expected to have more roads in that satisfactory condition and good condition. And so, but you are still having some roads in fair and poor and very poor condition, 24% of your pavement. But if you further increase the budget to about $17 million, then you can really overcome that growing backlog and the backlog is going to get reduced to about 12%. All in all, if I want to leave you with some recommendations, first and foremost, right now, you have a satisfactory OCI. The OCI is 76. The PCI, which is the one that we typically, we had even in the previous studies, that is 79. The right index was 63. Your SI or Structural Index was 77. But that blended PCI or blended OCI that we came up with is 76 and about 40% of your pavements have an OCI of below 75. Your current funding of $8 million with the currently planned VIP projects are forecasted to result in an OCI of 76, basically maintaining the current conditions and a backlog of 24% in five years. But it is recommended to double up the funding. The more funding you do on the pavements, you can really combat that backlog and reduce the backlog to 12%. And that is expected to result in an OCI of 80. And that way, you will have almost 80% of your roads in satisfactory and good condition. And that means that you basically just need to do preventive maintenance from thereafter and less and less Milan overlay or reconstruction work. Again, you know, that being proactive is really important when we talk about pavement management. And it has been proven over and over that it saves money. And you all are doing a fantastic job doing those type of preventive maintenance. Oftentimes, I use Minot as an example to other agencies, you know? Crack sealing, preventive maintenance is something that you've been doing for a long time. And it is showing that it is paying off and your pavements are not deteriorating as fast as some of the other agencies. But again, there's always, if you have more money, you can always do better. And these are just some numbers for your consideration. And the last piece is that it is recommended to re-survey the streets every few years to update the conditions, update the assumptions, rerun the models and track that pavement performance in the network. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions? Steve?
Yes, doctor. Very interesting presentation. You said that we're doing a pretty good job in terms of maintenance with what we have. How does our overall road condition, taking all the different measures into account, compare with that of the average city, to the extent you're aware of that?
Yes, and thanks for mentioning to the extent that I'm aware of. Because I only know about the clients that we work with. I of course don't know about the entire United States, but we work with cities and counties all across the US. And I would say the average conditions we are seeing among our clients, which I should say maybe they're doing better because they're seeking our services and they're actually worrying about their pavement performance. The averages we're seeing is about 65. So you're definitely doing a lot better than average.
DI?
We do have clients that do a lot better, but there are a lot of them that do a lot worse, especially in the northern states, where the weather is not even cooperative. Yeah, I mean, in Florida and southern states, sometimes we do see better pavement performances. But overall, I would say on average, you are doing better than average.
Make sure I understand this. You're talking about PCI among your clients. Does around 65 and ours is 76?
Yes, so, yeah, yeah. So I mean, there's differences between PCI and OCI. But I would say the OCI is about 65. I would say, yeah, the average, the average PCI, OCI is about 60 to 65 among our clients. And yes, your average OCI is 76 and your average PCI, which is just the surface distresses, excluding the Structural Index and the right quality, just looking at the surface distresses, is 79 right now.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, thank you, doctor.
Sure, thank you, yeah.
Is there anything else, Lance, you'd like to add?
No, Mr. Mayor. If you have other questions, just contact our office at any time.
Okay. Steve?
Yeah, Lance, before you walk away, are these results in line with your subjective kind of professional judgment? Were there any major surprises here in terms of the data? I mean, this is a very comprehensive assessment and data set from my non-engineering perspective. Is it kind of what you expected or?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Padraig Lu, I'd say yes. And what Sadef had focused on tonight was trying to draw some attention to the rideability index. Because the last time we presented on this, the very first time we did a comprehensive review, we had similar results where we had a lot of pavements that were in satisfactory or good condition. And of course, if you're not a civil engineer or you don't study pavements for a living and you just drive down the street, you say, well, how can they be good when I keep hitting bump after bump after bump? Well, a couple things. In a municipality, there's always manholes and gate valves and valley gutters are going to go around and that's a constant, no matter where you're at in the country. But what we've had to do in Minot for so long is patch and patch and patch. And every time you do that, it creates a bump or an unevenness that you're going to have because it didn't come out uniform at the back of a paver. So I wanted to be able to capture some of that ride information and be able to display that in the report. and be able to display that in the report. So hopefully, we can help the public understand that we may have a pavement that says it's in good condition because it doesn't have very many surface distresses, but it doesn't ride very well. And so we can do other treatments to try to address that, like leveling and some microseals that we're doing and milling overlays. But I think it's important to understand that too. And if the expectation from the public is that they want the rideability to be, you know, as high as it possibly can, then that's going to increase our pavement budget because now a chip seal isn't going to take care of that ride issue. It's going to seal the surface, protect it, but it's not going to take the unevenness out of the pavement. So I thought that was important to try to point out.
Is that what laypeople and drivers notice most, the driveability?
For sure, yes.
So from an engineering standpoint, that's probably not the key issue. But from a user's standpoint, citizen's standpoint, that is the key issue?
That's correct.
That helps a lot.
Scott?
So Lance, obviously, when we've talked before and I've mentioned to you in other meetings, but I'll say it publicly, that obviously I believe the streets of Minot have gotten significantly better over the last four or five years. If you were to go back before, the city councils before this one began to invest more, what would you have said our numbers would have probably been like then? How much, so what I'm asking is how much improvement have we made in the last four or five years?
I would say, Mr. Mayor and Alderman Burlingame, that, you know, I don't think we've gone up in PCI percentage points dramatically. I think what you're seeing now is we've had an influx of federal funds that's helped us out. And council has now increased our budget year after year. So what we're able to do now is more preventative maintenance work. So you're seeing, I call it touchpoints. We're getting more touchpoints across our network instead of what we had to do before because the streets were in tough shape is we were in, like Sadef had mentioned, don't do the worst first methodology. Well, that's what we had to do, just to try to keep things together because we were just out of money to try to do the safety patches and things that were required. And now we're able to start getting away from that methodology and get more touchpoints across the city, do more milling overlays. And, you know, this year, we're doing our largest chip seal we've ever done at $3.6 or $7 million. When I first started here in 2009, our chip seal budget was around $350,000. So we're able to reallocate some dollars, spread it out. And I think we're turning the corner, we're doing a lot better.
Steve?
Follow-up on that. So make sure I understand this. You're saying that our routine maintenance in terms of this one procedure, chip seal, has increased by 10?
What it, Mr. Mayor and Alderman Padrigula, what it's doing is it's allowing us to protect the streets that are in good condition. And we don't have to worry about them as much. And now we can start focusing on some of the other roadways across town that needed more attention.
But has it increased tenfold? Would I understand you correctly?
No, not tenfold, it'd be 10 percentage points. So if we went from maybe a 65 PSI to about a 75, 76 PSI, I think that's probably about where we're at.
PCI?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Okay. And obviously, the good doctor gave this very cheery solution. 17 million bucks would get us completely where we should be and uncover or deal with the backlog. We're spending eight. What would your thought be in terms of something realistic now? I'm not going to ask this the city manager yet or Dave Layfield or finance guy, but from your engineering standpoint, what's reasonable?
Well, Mr. Mayor and Alderman Padrigula, what ends up happening is if you don't have enough dollars to get to your end goal within five years, you have to extend your time period. So I think at last year's budget presentation, we talked about, you know, trying to get there in a 15-year plan. What that does over time is it costs you more money, right? Because it takes longer to get to your end goals. You're spending more because the program takes longer. It's just like a deferred cost. And so what I, and what I recommended last week during our budget discussion.
I forgot, I'm sorry.
That's okay. It was whatever we do, don't go backwards. So right now, you've seen us starting to turn the corner. If we keep on our current level of funding, our PCI or, excuse me, our OCI will stay the same, stay at a 76. But we start to reduce that backlog because we're getting more touchpoints across the city. We're able to address more streets. So my recommendation is if we have a tight budget, then let's try to make sure that we're at least keeping up with inflation. And then where budget allows, we can start to increase the program over time. And we can work with the finance department to try to figure that out. That would be my recommendation.
So stay where we are, or a 3% increase, if that's what inflation is?
Yes, if we can.
And that would keep us where we're at, not improve things, but hold us stable?
Right.
Okay. Now, I guess the bigger policy question would be, last time I asked you how much it would cost to fix our infrastructure, you gave me this astounding figure of $630 million or something like that for the pipes. So roads are different than pipes. So in terms of delayed deferred maintenance, we're looking at, what did you say? How much to bring us up, 100? No, or did she, I'm sorry?
Mr. Mayor and Alderman Padrigula, it was $100 million to fix everything within five years. But the number that I had given you before was inclusive of street maintenance and then.
Oh, it was, I'm sorry, I don't remember. My eyes glazed over when I saw the 600 million. So it's only 630 million, not 730 million.
Correct.
Get us caught up. Thanks, that's a real relief. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Scott?
So going along with you, Lance had mentioned a little bit ago that there was some new money that came in as a rate of some federal dollars. Are those federal, like COVID-related stimulus dollars? Or why did we get additional money from the feds? And perhaps more importantly, how do we get more?
Well, Mr. Mayor and Alderman Burlingame, what ended up happening is we were able to to add an additional project to the DOT's transportation improvement program. So they solicit us every year for, to put a project in the program five years out. It just so happened that we approached the DOT and requested to see if they had any funds to Millen Overlay 16th Street and 37th Avenue here, the project that we did the year before. At the time, they had some projects that were underbid. So they had some dollars available. So we were able to get a project in out of order, which is pretty rare. And nowadays, because of what's happening in the industry with the injection of some of the federal funds, contractors are getting busy, materials are getting to be in short supply and the prices for a construction worker are going through the roof. So I don't think we're going to have extra availability from the DOT anytime soon. But that's what happened. And so we're able to use, it was about $2.5 million extra to reduce the cost of that project. We only ended up paying $400,000 or $500,000 instead of close to $3 million.
Anything else? Thank you, Lance.
You're welcome.
Mark?
I'm over. We receive and file the pavement report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Padrigula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Burlingame?
Yes. Moving on to item 8.3, consider the request for proposals for the lease or sale of the city-owned Renaissance and Central parking ramps. What are the wishes of the council?
A move approval.
Move by lease, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Steve, any discussion? Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There were some alternatives, I think, in the memo regarding whether, you know, the central ramp should be dealt with because there's less maybe issues with it relative to needs by the city here at this ramp or needs when the M building is operational eventually. And so I guess my thought would be that staff should perhaps look at either separating the two rather than bundling them into one project. Maybe one would go forward sooner than the other or that kind of thing. But I would leave that up to the discretion of staff and what would be deemed the most likely combination to attract developers. Maybe some conversations need to be held in order to find that out, too. What is a developer going to view as most attractive to be able to purchase the property and develop it or lease the property and, you know, go vertical? I mean, those are all things that, I guess, unless you're a developer, you don't really know. So I think some latitude is needed there.
Okay. Any other comments? Any further discussion?
Steve? Just a quick question for Jonathan or whoever. I know part of the purpose of this item and the request for proposals is to get a handle on what might be out there, what kind of interest might exist in advance of that or exclusive of that. Any thoughts about how realistic this might be? I mean, I know we're going to have to wait to find out. But, I mean, do you have a sense that we might be able to entice somebody or are we?
Mayor Ross, Councilman Padrigula, I don't think that there's an easy way to assess that. I think we would, we have a mailing list of about 100. I know we have one local development, two actually, who have shown a little bit of interest, would like to hear from us when we put it out. And so, as with anything, we're, you know, we're trying to assess that by, you know, when you do an RFQ or this is an RFP because we're trying to assess not their qualifications, but what they want to put on the table. That's why it's a request for proposal rather than for qualifications. So we don't have a strong way of doing that. And if it's okay, I would also like to comment on Alderman Janser's comments. We, it is kind of unbundled and it's put together, but they're really, they're so identical, they're put together. We could create a little greater clarity by, you know, just physically repeating that proposal. But because the two properties are nearly identical, that's why they're together. So we do think that there is a difference that you noted on the needs of this garage that's right next to this building and the Renaissance, excuse me, the central garage down the street. And so we think we would get different responses because of that.
Okay.
Just before we continue, can I just ask, Alderman Olson, are you just wanting it to be a moving for approval to advertise for the request for proposals?
Yes.
Yes.
Clarification. So what's your timeline of moving forward? How soon will these, will they be out?
It would take about five months to go through the process because you, it's two steps. You have to, oh, excuse me, Mr. Mayor. They, you need time for them to make an initial response. This is what we would do. Then we would need to assess, there'd be a committee formed, usually through the city manager. We form a committee of less than 10 to sit down, say, this looks like a good proposal, go back to those top proposals and then say, tell us more. Now we're specifically evaluating it. Come up with an actual drawings, come up with actual costs that are involved and what the size of your investment is going to be. Do you want incentives? Would, for instance, would a tax increment financing be involved? That kind of thing. So we would take a look at what that might be and evaluate it a second time. You can, if the first evaluation doesn't end up with anything that the committee would feel is productive and there would be usually members of the city council involved with that, can stop right there. But certainly make a final evaluation if you really think the quality is there. So you're kind of, again, the first step is to evaluate, what are they looking to do? Does that make the city interested? Is that exciting kind of thing? But then say, we need to take time, be more specific, really know what's involved and then make a final decision from that. And it's going to take at least five months to go through that.
Mark?
You mentioned, you know, drawings and things. I guess two points. One, one point would be that, you know, I know that the students from NDSU came up with ideas for downtown. I guess I would hope that whoever is interested in this would have access to that information, be able to consider it for whatever, you know, help that might be. And the other thing is, you know, I guess obviously whoever is responding would, you know, would be interested. We would also need to be sure that we're vetting whoever the developer is. As we know from past experience, that that's critical. So it maybe goes without saying, but I just wanted to mouth that one at one time.
How long though, but Steve, before, how long before the proposal's out on the street?
Mr. Mayor, I think it can be done in a matter of a couple of weeks. I mean, we have to get the proposal together to be able to send it out and so forth. But, you know, a lot of it's done electronically. So this could be out in a matter of a couple of weeks.
Steve?
Just wanted to echo what Mark said for the benefit of you who haven't been here very long and also for Alderman Burlingame. It is absolutely critical that any proposals be adequately vetted, given the fiasco and the very negative reaction that the public had with the previous projects. This is maybe not quite the third rail of local politics, but pretty darn close to it. And we really can't make a mistake on this. I mean, just the general importance of downtown and the opportunity these two properties might bring, but also in terms of the public confidence that was lost and then the conflict that occurred when we first embarked on the ramps. The other thing is if and when, hopefully, when we get some decent proposals, I'm going to be recommending that we ask an outside law firm specializing in public-private partnerships to vet it even more carefully and more thoroughly. I mean, it's that important, I think, that we get it right. That, you know, although I certainly value the input of our legal staff and you, I think we would have to have some, I wouldn't want to have somebody from outside come in and say yes or no because it's such an important and such a public kind of development. We need to maintain the confidence of the public.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I can only say that I absolutely agree and staff is fully comfortable with what you're suggesting. We will definitely act upon that.
Thank you. Anything else? Oh, Dave?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, while I am in full support and definitely agree that this needs to move forward, I have a couple of questions or I think there's some unanswered questions regarding the process of selling the parking ramps, if that's being proposed. There were some federal dollars involved in the construction of those parking ramps. So there may be some entanglements that come along with that and I'm not sure exactly what that would entail. There's a process that we've utilized in the past for selling surplus real estate. The ordinance is a lot more wide open now than it used to be. It requires the council's approval or a ratification after the fact. But typically, the process that we've used to dispose of excess real estate in the case of flood procurements or flood properties that we have acquired, acquisitions, it's been through a sealed bid process. So this would be a little bit of a deviation from that typical process. It's similar to what was done with the property, Home Sweet Home property. But I think it would behoove us to clear. would be behoove us to clear, clarify that prior to putting this out on the street. I talked to Harold earlier and I just, I don't want companies to put a lot of effort and time and money into coming up with a proposal that we later learn isn't possible for us to accommodate. So I think it's, it's important that we make sure we answer those questions and maybe narrow the focus a little bit. Maybe it is the lease only option. That's the way it originally was crafted. It was always a ground lease with the developer owning, owning the vertical rights. So that might be something that has to be honed in a little bit.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you, John. We have a motion?
Yes, the motion is to approve advertising the request for proposals for enhanced development of parking ramps, property and associated air rights located at 205 First Street Southwest and number five First Street Southwest, known as the Renaissance City Hall and Central Garages.
Call the rule?
Olson?
Yes.
Padraig O'Gorman?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Burlingame?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Moving on to item 8.4, the alcohol ordinance rewrite. What are the wishes of the council? What are the wishes of the council?
And your honor, or?
Oh.
Mayor.
Worship.
Shift from court mode. Mayor Ross and members of the council, just if I can just briefly mention here, this isn't something that the council has to act on here tonight. We've had this memo prepared here for a number of months for your consideration, and this just seemed like a good time to bring it forward to the council with its agendas being as full as they have been for the past few months. But we have reached out to Swanson and Workup and they're willing to provide some assistance to the city if the council's interested in a comprehensive review and rewrite of its alcohol ordinances. We have some alternatives there in the memo for the council to consider as well, if it would like us to, to solicit advertisements for assistance on this front, or if it has some other means it wants to take with alcohol ordinances. But back when we attended the city council retreat, this was an item that was brought up as a potential interest of the council, as a council priority. So we just wanted to place it on the agenda for your consideration, let you know that Swanson and Workup said that they would be interested in providing assistance if the council would like to go that direction.
Mark?
I guess when, we had a couple of instances where, you know, a license holder was kind of pushing the envelope as far as what our ordinance allowed. And I think that stimulated some desire to take a look at Grand Forks ordinance and look at how it was different and then maybe make some adjustments to ours. You know, we kind of went through a process four, five years ago where it involved current license holders and, you know, other, other people who wanted some things changed. And out of that, we, we got some modifications regarding outdoor facilities at some of these, some of the liquor stores or, I mean, bars and so forth. And, and so it was kind of a, kind of a modification as opposed to a start from scratch and rewrite the whole thing. And, and I guess I'm reluctant to, you know, hire an outside law firm to start from scratch and spend a large amount of money to go through that process again. Others may feel differently that, that that's what needs to be done. But, you know, hopefully, I'd like to, I'd like to see a, a less drastic solution and maybe one that wasn't quite as expensive as this looks like it potentially could be.
Steve?
Could I ask how expensive this could be according to the city attorney's guesses?
Well, and that, and Mayor and Alderman Padraig O'Gorman, that's going to turn on how deep of a dive the council wants to take into this and exactly the approach that you want to take to it. If it's something where you want to take, if you want to establish a committee that's going to be meeting, so akin to the zoning ordinance steering committee, there a consultant was hired to assist with redrafting the zoning code. And that was a process that took, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian Billingsley, but about two years in total. I believe it was in excess of $100,000 over the course of the two years that had to be budgeted. So if you want to take as, and that would, that encompassed meeting every couple of weeks with the steering committee and then ultimately bringing it through the planning commission and the city council for consideration. So that would, that's an example of I would consider to be a very deep dive into the alcohol ordinances. And this would arguably his, from historical context, be a slightly more controversial topic to be bringing towards the council. Maybe a little bit more discussion and interest from the public would be involved in a, in a topic such as this. So I would say it would probably be at least akin to what we saw with the zoning ordinance steering committee in around the $100,000 mark, if it's going to be a year-long process with numerous committees. Now, you could also direct us to retain counsel to just look at our ordinances and make a recommendation based upon requests of the council. That might be a reduced scope. And if that's the approach that the council wants to take, I would probably invite Attorney Swanson to come and attend a council meeting and discuss a possible approach on that front as well. That may be a reduced fee. Or if the council has just specific areas of the ordinance that it wants tweaked and relooked at, our staff could try to look at that too as, as it arises. It just depends on how much manpower that you want behind doing this type of an ordinance amendment. We're currently still hiring for our staff attorney position and we do have one applicant. But Nick and I are stretched fairly thin at present if it's going to come towards doing a deep dive with a considerable amount of research.
Are we obligated, given that amount of money, to send out an RFP or can we do a sole source?
It's a services contract, so we wouldn't have to do an RFP. But if the council would be more comfortable broadcasting an RFP for services, we can certainly do that. We could also reach out to different law firms in town and get a quote for people who may be interested. One consideration is that this does concern our local liquor ordinances and our local license holders here. So a lot of them may have procured local counsel to represent them in matters pertaining to their liquor ordinances. So if there is a potential that it could conflict out a few of the local counsel, if that's what you're looking for. But we can definitely put together an RFP if that's something the council would, would prefer.
From what I remember this firm saying, it sounds like they have really done this before and it would be fairly easy and quick for them to take a look and offer their suggestions.
Easy and quick might, I would probably describe it more as familiar ground for, for them. Easy and quick would be wonderful.
I'm trying to stay positive about this stuff.
But I don't want to put those words in Attorney Howard Swanson's mouth. It's a way to describe this process potentially. But, but it would be familiar ground for him. He's assisted Grand Forks with this in the past. He's been, I think municipal council for over 40 years. He's worked with the city of Minot on our eminent domain cases for the past 12 cases. So he's, he's familiar with our process. He's willing to offer his same rates that he's offered in his eminent domain cases. So he, he seems like he would be a natural fit. But, I mean, this is a public hearing too. So if there are other attorneys or firms that are willing and interested in providing those services, we'd certainly take a look at their resume. We'd forward the same to the council to review as well too. And we, and we can move forward with a formal RFP too. We have no problem moving forward with that. It just depends on the pace at which the council wants to move on this particular item. So if you want to move quickly, Howard Swanson's willing and available to provide those services. And if it's something where you kind of want to take some time, think about the process that you want to go through with it, we could put together an RFP. If you want to see if there's other attorneys out there that can offer comparable services, we can do that too.
I guess my initial thought would be that probably in terms of fairness, we should put out an RFP. If I remember correctly, Paul was the one who was most interested in this and he's not here. And so I guess regardless, I would ask Harold what his thoughts would be in terms of what he's starting to look at in terms of the budget process. I mean, if we're talking about $50,000 a year for two years or $50,000 for a year, I wonder where that would lay in your preliminary sense of priorities in, in terms of the charge we've given you last week?
Well, in essence, as we went through the retreat with the facilitator, this was an issue that was identified as a significant issue for many on the council. You know, there's some, there's some legal questions in here to, to weed through a little bit and navigate through here. I agree with, you know, the city attorney's concerns with the amount of workload that her staff currently has and the ability to give this the due diligence that it needs. You know, this is a, a conversation that's come up a few times in the past and continues to come up again and again. I think having the advantage of a law firm that has helped in North Dakota of significant size through this conversation would be of advantage. Again, given that it's a high priority of the council, if, if it's a high priority of the majority of the council, then I think it's something that we make sure we go through the process correctly and do as due diligence. So hopefully we're not coming back and having this conversation every three to five years. Hopefully we can actually get a decision and some resolution. But when you're talking about how these liquor licenses are currently handled and if you want to significantly alter or change that, I think the, the council would be well ahead to have expert legal opinion on that matter. Because whatever you do, you want to make sure is defensible in court.
Right. No, I, I think that makes sense. I guess the, I mean, it seems trivial. I mean, we do have in some ways, I mean, we have an ordinance, it works. Nobody's complained lately, at least not very loudly. But if I remember the discussion, and again, I wish Paul were here, if I remember the discussion adequately, it seems like this was kind of a catalyst. This was kind of a roadblock in terms of some significant economic development activities and business activities, particularly downtown. And if we're going to be trying to sell off the parking ramps or lease them, if we're continuing to put energy into facades and things like that, I mean, one of the things we want is some grocery store downtown or more, more eating establishments. And having flexibility with liquor licenses could really help them out, could really make the difference, as I understand it. So again, I have, I have mixed feelings. It seems fairly inconsequential. On the other hand, if it's a roadblock to some good things happening, then maybe we should expedite it.
Mark?
I don't necessarily disagree with that. However, you know, I, I guess I, I think we have some vagueness here that it would be nice to, to try to get more specific about. And so it would be nice if, certainly Paul was one and I, I'm maybe, maybe Carrie Evans was another person who was interested in, in having this looked at or addressed. And neither of them are here tonight. But, you know, I'm not sure exactly what their desires are in terms of what changes there might be. And I'm not sure what's possible. Maybe one step that would make sense would be to have the, have Workup or whoever the, the attorney is appear and visit with us when the rest of us are here and kind of dig into, you know, what are you looking to get changed?
Right.
Because I'm not sure I know what that is.
Excited, I agree.
If it's, if it's essentially what I'll call doing some minor adjustments or some tweaking, maybe we don't have to do this whole process and start from the bottom up. On the other hand, if we're looking at a whole change to the way these licenses are held and transferred and all, all of that, then yeah, there's all kinds of, you know, challenges with that. So I guess I, I'd like to know what we're trying to get done, I guess, before we commit to something.
Lisa?
So I can kind of recollect the, the instances that Alderman Janser was speaking about, because I can remember two different times where city council has taken up liquor ordinances. And both times a committee was established and, and a number of meetings and we made some changes and we kept some things the same because everyone that came to spoke to, that came and spoke to us were in agreement with the way that things were. I, I think that that should be our first step, is to hear from people, what do they think needs changing? And then if there was a suggestion that we wanted to consider, then run it past an attorney to see if it's something that legally we can do. But I hate for us to take on a huge amount of fees incurred to change something that maybe no one feels needs to be changed. So I mean, I, if we want to wait for the other two to come, you know, I would be willing to do that. But I would be looking at option three, that would be my preference. I guess I'm not making it in the form of emotion, but I, I would like to see us hear about what the concerns are, because I'm only aware of one concern that has come before us in the last year.
Scott?
So I have, I've had alcohol ordinance issues is something I have had quite a few conversations with constituents about and normally about either perceived or real inadequacies within the system or government overreach in it. Now, there may be good reasons for that, but at least that's a perception I've often heard. So I, I know Paul, Alderman Pittner and I have had this conversation a few times that, I, I think it's worth having a conversation. I do like Alderman Olson's suggestion of, let's listen to people. Let's, let's bring some folks in, let's get them in front of the microphone, let's hear from people, let's hear from current liquor license holders, if they're happy or if they're unhappy. But also I think it's important to listen to perspective as well, because right now there's a little bit of a government-created monopoly on liquor licenses. And I happen to know somebody who is interested in purchasing one and they're essentially just waiting for a business to fail. And that seems so anti-free market to listen to that. And so I, I'm willing, I, I would love to have a bigger conversation around this, but before we start spending $100,000 or more for a well-qualified attorney, I, I think for us as, as a council, get a better idea of what's happening out there would be very appropriate.
Yeah, to, to me, you know, that freedom of enterprise is, is a big thing. And against, you know, I would like to maximize people's opportunity to be nimble and take advantage of a market out there, whether it's for a new restaurant or, or a grocery store. We, we now have a Target that has a liquor store. You know, I think that they're probably doing pretty well without it, but I could see it making a difference to some other people trying to start out. To me, the issue is how do we facilitate people growing and trying new things business-wise versus the property interests that people have? People who've paid $100,000 and more for one of these things. And it seems like if we open the door completely that the value of what they spent money on, a great deal of money is, kind of goes out the window and that doesn't seem fair to them. So that's the thing I'm struggling with most, is how do we facilitate new, new operations, new businesses starting versus recognizing the property value of what people have invested in and planned on for a long time. So I guess, you know, that's where, you know, I, I'm not so, well, I mean, obviously I want to listen to what people locally want to say, but I, I'd like to see some expertise testify into that. And, and the Workup firm sounds like they might have that expertise if they could just share with us how, how people deal with this dilemma. And what are some common solutions? That's what I'm interested in.
I'd also like to get some views and opinions from Alderman Pittner as well.
Right.
So, I mean, with that said, are we leaning towards just putting this on the table then? Tell a full council? Or do we have?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to weigh in a little bit on the procurement process here with some of the discussion. I would envision this as being a request for qualifications. It would be a qualification-based selection.
Sure.
So a proposal insinuates that you are looking for an end result or you have a predetermined result that you're looking for. And I think at this point, my understanding is this is very open-ended, that nobody knows how far this needs to go. The qualification-based selection can be done informally, because ultimately we're looking for someone who has experience and knowledge in this area. You could move forward with the qualificat- or the negotiations with Mr. Workup's law firm and you can start down that path and basically take this as far as you want to. down that path and basically take this as far as you want to, or you can end this relatively quickly as well. But at least we would start the process of the procurement and the negotiation with his firm for the agreements to do this work.
Thank you, Dave.
Mr. Mayor, so I've rethought, I've reconsidered. I'm going to make a motion to approve option three because it's still leaving all of this wide open after we've had some discussion and Alderman Pittner and Alderman, Alderwoman Evans are part of that and we've heard from some local business owners and some residents. We may still get to this point, but my motion would be to approve option three.
And we have a second?
One second.
Second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, maybe for the sake of the public, can you, can someone summarize what option three is?
Mm-hmm.
Or if you'd like, I can do that.
I can read it, let me pull it up here.
I've got it here, Lisa.
Here it is, okay. The city council could appoint an alcohol ordinance review and rewrite committee to discuss this issue and make a recommendation on how to proceed. If such a committee is appointed, city staff would recommend a minimum, including the following individuals on the committee: mayor, one council member, one member of the public, two current license holders. City staff also recommends that the following attend any committee meeting and serve in an advisory committee, which, excuse me, advisory capacity, which would be non-voting. That'd be the city manager, the city attorney, the chief of police, and the community development director.
That is the motion and the second. Any further discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Padugula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Burlingame?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Move on to item 8.5.
If I may, I do have one question about the appointments to that committee. Do you want to make the appointments at this meeting or do you want to open applications? How would you like the appointment process?
I will leave that to the mayor. I don't know how he normally does the appointment process.
Well, they usually jump onto the website, right? If they're interested in serving on a committee, they can go to the website?
Yes, I can see if Derek will help me set up a dropdown where it will include an alcohol ordinance committee.
Okay, thank you.
And then it would be considered by the mayor, the mayor that can make the appointments, or does the council want to make the ultimate appointment to the committee?
I think we would approve his appointments.
Okay.
To approve, yeah.
Okay, let's move on to item 8.5, contract negotiations for the city manager. We sent out some information earlier or late last week, I think it was, must have been last week, for your review. Any questions or discussion, open for discussion?
Just a question, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
So in the memo that we received, there are suggestions by the city attorney's office to deal with some of these questions, is the proposal that we adopt those recommendations as well?
That's what we're up for discussion for, I think. I don't know if there's a, I mean, are we actually looking for action tonight or? Steph?
And that's, and mayor, members of the council. So city manager Stuart has submitted a couple of proposed changes to his contract. So the first question is if you want to entertain those changes. Those have been dispersed to members of the council to review and consider. This was placed on the agenda here for tonight if you wanted to discuss those changes. And if you want to take action on it tonight, you can certainly do so, though again, it is, we are missing two members of the council as well. So it's, that is something to, for you to weigh and consider as well. If you want to go through the changes, we could certainly do that, it just depends on what the council is most comfortable with doing.
Would you like to go through them, Steph?
Sure.
Okay.
So the first initial change proposed by city manager Stuart is an amendment of the initial term from three years to five years. And so the first proposal, I guess, question back to city manager Stuart is, are you wanting to extend the current contract, the initial term, to five years? Are you proposing completing the term of the initial contract and commencing a new contract for a five-year term?
So my intent with that was to work an additional five years. So not completing three years and adding two years onto it, it's completing the three-year contract and then entering into a contract with the city of Minot for an additional five years.
And then the, oh, sorry.
Are you into year two now or which year?
I'm at year two and a half. So for point of the public and for the council, just to remind, so when I was hired in December 28th of 2020, it was for a three-year contract. The severance language of the contract states that the council either has to give me six months' notice, which would be by June 28th of 2023, of the intent not to renew the contract, or should the council terminate that contract at any other period, then there's a six months' severance in it. So your, June 28th will be the timeframe that the council has to take action if you choose not to renew the contract, otherwise it renews for a one-year period.
One, five.
And so when the mayor asked me if, for suggested revisions to the contract, one of my recommendations back was rather than renew a year at a time, I would prefer to enter into a new five-year contract.
In conjunction with that clause, I have a question. There's a reference to exhibit three, I don't remember getting that with the exhibits.
Well, the other revision I suggested had to do with the performance evaluation component of the contract. So I did not ask for any pay raises or anything else. I believe that the contract outlines that my pay raises are handled the same as the rest of employees with market adjustments and those kinds of things. I believe that's appropriate, I'm not asking for any significant pay raise with this. So the only two things I asked was for a five-year contract, and then the current contract requires a 360 evaluation every year. I'm not opposed to an annual evaluation and I'm not opposed to on occasion, a 360 evaluation. But in my line of work, a 360 evaluation does create some friction and some consternation with some direct reports. And so I asked that that be handled every three years. So exhibit three would be also including what that performance evaluation document is that the council will use to evaluate my performance on an annual basis.
Do you have a copy of exhibit three?
I do not, it would be the same one that you just used through this last performance evaluation.
And you said that a yearly process creates some consternation, said for you or for your staff or both?
A little bit of both.
In what way?
Well, I'm responsible for holding some staff accountable, which means sometimes I give some constructive criticism, which isn't well-received, and is sometimes, as I observed in this last evaluation, is sometimes reciprocated in my own personal evaluation back to the council. I do believe that it's important for the council to know how well my staff feels and have confidence in me, but providing the opportunity to, for retaliation on an annual basis from direct reports, I think is not really fair.
If there is retaliation, it could also be dealt with managerially or by the council. That's, I don't think it's fair for you to be in that kind of position where people are retaliating because you've given them an honest assessment of how they're doing. That's just not right. We need to protect you and I don't think you should be subjected to that if your assessment of them is fair.
But to answer the original question, exhibit three would be is to use the same performance evaluation material that the council has used in each of the annual evaluations that they've already done for me since I've been here. The only difference would be is that in the years of the 360 evaluation, that same form would be provided to my direct reports and then that would be consolidated by the HR department provided to the council, similar to what it was done this year. But instead of doing it every year, it'd be done once every three years. I would also ask that it'd be helpful that in that process, that it would at least be helpful if those responding would identify as either council or staff. With it all mixed together, it's hard for me to assess whether constructive criticism is coming from council as my bosses or as staff, that gets convoluted in there. So I understand the importance of maybe not wanting to tie a name to it out of fear of retaliation, but it makes it hard for me to assess and resolve issues if I don't really know where it's coming from.
Mayor, I do have a follow-up question about the evaluations. So the request is for a five-year contract and then the 360 evaluation that staff would conduct would be conducted every three years. But given the five-year term of the contract, depending upon which year you start the 360 evals, you're either going to have two 360 evals over the course of the five-year term or you're going to have one. Is there a year that you would like the 360 evaluations to be conducted? Do you want to designate which years or when that will commence?
I think that recommendation makes some sense. I'll leave it to council to decide how often they want to do a 360 evaluation and establish the years for that. I just don't like it happening every year.
I guess one thought I'd have is that, you know, we're having some significant changes in department heads and I'd be interested in their feedback. I feel more comfortable, I mean, we had a disaster before you came, Harold, and we want to make sure, I want to make sure that doesn't happen again. And part of the cause of the disaster was us not being on top of things and, you know, the 360 or whatever you want to call it evaluation provides a safeguard for us on the council. It also provides a vent, I guess, for staff. And again, with department heads turning over now the new proposed management structure, you know, if we just do it every, you know, two or three years, that leaves a significant number of people, or some people out of the loop because they've just come on board. I, you know, I guess I'm not real comfortable with three years, I would prefer a one-year one and then again, more of an insurance policy for you and them if, to prevent any kind of retaliation or overly negative kind of assessment. I just, I just feel more comfortable having our pulse more closely on the, our fingers more closely on the pulse of the management team. That would be my thought. I, you know, I have no problem with the five-year contract, I think that's very reasonable. I do have some other questions, but, you know, and if you want to talk about them now, but I also am not keen on the current 360 assessment. Part of the reason you mentioned is that we can't, you can't separate council versus department heads, and I think that's an important distinction to make. So I don't want to get tied into one instrument.
Okay. Lisa?
I'd have two questions. For the remainder of our staff, do they have an annual evaluation?
All staff members have an annual evaluation. As far as I'm aware, I'm the only one that has a 360 evaluation.
Okay, and that was kind of part of my second question then. So do any subordinates have the opportunity to give a review or an evaluation of their director?
I'll leave that to Lisa to answer, but as far as I'm aware, no other staff is required to have a 360 evaluation. So there's no input from subordinates with regards to their evaluation.
Mr. Mayor, Alderwoman Olson, we've never had any 360s for any additional staff.
Okay.
The city manager is the only one.
All right, thank you.
Scott?
So as a person who just got done having a 360 evaluation in his own job, it's always interesting because any of us who have ever been, had a supervisor, every supervisor we've ever had does an evaluation a certain way. They view your performance from a one to five based on their view of it. When you start doing, and then you get a new supervisor, and that new supervisor looks at things and rates things and evaluates things in a slightly different way. Sometimes you have good supervisors who just say wonderful things about you and then you have bad ones who can find every fault and you're basically, sometimes you're doing the same essential job. With a 360 evaluation, the value of it is that you get input from various different folks. The problem is, is not everybody rates things or looks at things exactly the same way. And unfortunately, when hidden behind anonymity, it can be an opportunity for people to, you know, say things they wouldn't say to somebody's face, to be blunt. And all of us sort of live in the world of social media and everything else where we're used to getting insults, even if we know who it is, that they would never say to somebody's face. I do believe in the importance of 360 evaluations for the city manager's position. I do worry also about the fact that doing him too much can create friction because there's also the issue of I gave, I evaluated Harold as a staff member and I gave him, I told him what my problems were and then not a doggone thing happened. You know, and then people begin to feel disenfranchised by the entire process because they gave their input and just everything stayed the same. And that can actually create internal issues as well. So I like the kind of compromise of doing 360 evaluations on a regular basis, but perhaps not every year. Given that opportunity now, are we going to miss some folks? Yes. Is it possible that, you know, some employees might be here for three years before they get a chance to do one? Sure. But I do think that that's important. And furthermore, Alderman Padugula, when you talked about some of the changes that are happening right now, change, anybody that's ever been in a leadership role of an organization where there's change, it naturally disrupts people. It's really hard. People actually don't like change very much. And so there's going to be a certain period of time of discontent and unhappiness and all of that kind of stuff. And as we as a council give the city and the city manager a direction on where to go, that is going to happen sometimes, but that doesn't, that is just the nature of the beast and not necessarily the opportunity for, to properly analyze the performance of the city manager. So I just think that, yes, I fully believe in 360 evaluations and I was not on the council, obviously, when the previous city manager was here, I was watching it on Facebook and, you know, doing all that kind of fun stuff. And I respect the fact that we can never return to that again, but I just believe that, and I do support 360 evaluations as a process, I just don't necessarily feel it's appropriate every year.
I guess I'd be willing to cut back to once every two years, given what I've heard, but frankly, it disappoints me a great deal to hear that our department heads aren't subject to the same kind of input process from their subordinates. I think that's a real mistake and when we talk about reorganization systems and employee performance, that's something I intend to bring up. I just think that's a very, very bad idea. Now, I grant you, my notion of supervision may be very different from the traditional one. I see it more as a collaborative and collegial kind of process. And I've mentioned before to this body that when I do have annual evaluations of my employees, one of my first questions is how can I be a better manager? How can I be a better employer? So that to me reflects the idea that we work together and I may have some changes I need to make or some reprioritization that I need to do in the organization and how resources are managed. But I think we really need to open this up and have more of a collegial structure and again, as I've said before, and will say again, more management development training programs so people work more closely together. I'm not saying they're not working closely, but, you know, I see there being room toward a more collegial management structure and I think that would improve productivity and morale. So yeah, if nobody else gets this kind of evaluation, it's not fair that Harold gets singled out. And I'd be willing to go every two years, but I really want us to look more closely at the feedback mechanisms that we have for line staff and also department heads. So again, I'm fine with every two years. As long as they have the floor, I have two other questions I wanted to bring up. One was, there's a lengthy discussion of sick leave and annual leave and all sorts of leave on page three. That would have to change if we go to a PTO system. So I think, I don't know if you'd want an amendment at that point or what, or, but that's obviously something we need to take care of. In terms of salary, just kind of from my own reference, I guess I can multiply the monthly total by 12. What is the current city manager's salary?
I'll defer to Lisa, but I have gotten, there was a market adjustment last year and then I have gotten the pay raises, but I think it's right around 180, 178, somewhere in there.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Padugula, I don't know if I know it specifically offhand, I think it's 182.
And that includes a cost? And that includes a cost, at market?
That's what it currently is at.
Okay.
But a reminder to council last budget that I was one of four positions that didn't get the full market adjustment.
Correct.
That was at my recommendation as well, but.
I appreciate your self-sacrifice for the organization, but we need to compensate you what the market says. I mean.
I believe last year, and I just wanted to reiterate, you received the grade changes. It was the additional step that you didn't take, which is the norm that we have for our employees. So the grade part of it, the market part was accepted, the normal raise portion, which is a step system, Harold deferred and chose not to take that portion of it.
Part of me feels like we're maybe not exploiting him, but taking advantage of his generosity and goodwill and good faith. I mean, it's a good example for other employees in terms of being frugal, but I, we should pay what the market says.
My concern is I have a big salary, so even a small percentage represents a bigger pay raise than most people get. So I have a hard time taking a $10,000 pay raise when other people are only getting maybe a couple thousand, so.
Okay, well, that's your choice, I guess. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
So I just briefly have a couple of highlights in the current agreement to put on the council's radar. So as it presently reads, the agreement is going to automatically renew on its anniversary date, which is December 28th, 2023. That's the term. So it would automatically renew for a one-year term unless the council gives notice at least six months before the expiration date or the end of that term. So both parties need to make their intentions known on or before June 28th, 2023. So we do have another council meeting in between here and there, and we could look at scheduling a special meeting if that's something that the council also wants, wants to consider as it's reviewing the contract. The city can still terminate the agreement at any time with or without cause, but depending upon the circumstances, there may be severance pay required. So paragraphs 15 and 16 of the agreement go into that and to some more detail. So I'll let the council review that and consider the requested changes by the city manager, and we can take whatever action the council deems appropriate.
Is this the kind of thing we have to have two readings on?
No, this is a contract negotiation.
So we could wait until all of us are here and then discuss it and act, as long as it's by the end of June?
Yes. There may be, and I'm going to defer to Dave on this one, there may be ordinance changes depending upon the, if there's some duties or responsibilities that you want to change, that would maybe change, have some ordinance ramifications. So if you look at the city manager duties and responsibilities underneath the ordinance, that could require an ordinance change. Or there is also the budget amendment, which the salary would fall under, or the budget ordinance, excuse me, that the salary would fall under. So if there's some amendment that you could foresee being made there, that could potentially require two meetings. But the contract itself, this would be approved in one reading.
And I.
Oh, go ahead, Steve. You had the floor.
Would that also lead to an automatic market adjustment or the step adjustment, whatever Harold got last time?
So I'll defer to Lisa on that. I know looking at the, so paragraph four of the contract discusses the base salary and base salary step increases. So the language of the contract currently reads, city agrees to pay Stewart an annual base salary of 165,000 payable in installments at the same time that other management employees of the city are paid. Then it discusses the 360 evaluation and the feedback that shall be required from the city council and all direct reports to the city manager. If he receives a favorable evaluation as determined by the council, the annual base salary shall increase. And then the second paragraph under compensation provides for base salary step increases. And it states, the city shall increase Stewart's base salary by step increment consistent with step increment increases provided to civil service employees of the city. And then that base salary step increment shall be approved by the city council as a part of the annual budget approval. So that's again paragraph four on page two of the present employment contract.
Mr. Mayor and council, I believe the initial change after the six months was the only change to Mr. Stewart's salary. That was not in line with the same time period as the rest of the employees. So essentially, his next change to his salary will be the first of January.
Mark, did you have something? Okay. Okay.
Just one more point on the 360 evaluation, and that is, if we're going to do a true 60, a 360 evaluation, my job impacts more, I mean, my, my job impacts internally and externally. So having evaluations from just the council and the staff really isn't a 360, it's more like a 270. The question, the challenge then is who externally would the council want to seek input? And then it's got to be probably a little bit different format because they're not going to know how I do the day-to-day operations internally, which is included as part of some of the personal evaluation. But if you're going to do a true 360, it's got to be more than just the council and the staff, in my opinion. So for example, put Breck on the spot, you know, how well am I working with MACDC? How well am I working with Trinity Hospital, the school district, those other types of community partners that I work with on a somewhat regular basis?
And Mayor, Mayor Tom and members of the council, the current contract does afford the council the opportunity to garner that feedback. It says the evaluation shall include feedback from, at a minimum, the city council and all direct reports to the city council. So that's minimum underneath the current existing contract. And it does, but it does require a 360 evaluation process annually under the current contract.
So to act expeditiously, could you redo your memo to summarize where we're at today and what needs to be decided by all of us next time we meet?
I could provide a summary of the conversation here today, but the decision as to renewal of the contract, basic terms, things of that nature, that would be in the council's discretion as to what it wants to, how it wants to do. So I could, I could make a recommendation, but I, and I could summarize the two requests of the city manager as well for the council to consider.
I don't want this thing to drag on, and I think, you know, the other two are missing, should get up to speed real quick.
Certainly, certainly. Yep, I could provide a memo summarizing.
Because it was a good memo that you wrote before, and I think it would help focus things.
Yes, no, I have no problem doing that. And would you like that prepared for the next council agenda meeting, or would the council like to consider a special meeting?
I think we could probably take care of it in a regular meeting.
Okay. We'll include it as an action item at the next regular city council meeting, and we'll prepare an agenda item to post with it with the outstanding issues in the negotiation. And then just for the council's reference too, you do have the opportunity to proceed into an executive session if that's something the council wants to do to provide negotiating instructions to the contract negotiator, as long as it, there's a potential to have an adverse fiscal impact on the negotiation too.
This is a very bizarre situation. He doesn't want to take the money I'm willing to offer him. I don't know about the rest of you, but that's, that's very strange.
I didn't say I'd say no. I just said I prefer to be treated the same as the rest of the employees.
I'm not sure there'd be an adverse impact.
So, Mr. Mayor, just a thought, and I feel like this is the third time now this has come up in discussion this evening, that we don't want to move forward because we have two people absent. And it's getting a little frustrating, quite honestly, because all of this information was sent out to all seven of us. We all had time to review it, and we do have a quorum here this evening, and I believe that we can vote on it. You know, the two that are absent are absent by choice, and if we can move forward, that would be my preference this evening.
Is there anything that we discussed tonight, and I'll throw this out to the council, that you're in disagreement on, whether it's the length of the contract, the salary requirements? The, now I know we had some discussion whether a three-year 360 or a two-year 360. Is there some consensus on that, that, I guess if we can narrow down where we're at and direct staff to put together a contract that we all agree on, we could probably vote to approve it the next meeting? Is that, is that kind of a direction we're at, or are we at a direction where, I mean, with what we talked about, are, so we're okay with a five-year contract?
Yes.
I am. We're okay with, with the salary requirements. I think the only thing we have an issue with, or that there may be different thoughts, is on the 360 evaluation. Mark?
I think that the two-year solution is a reasonable compromise. I think it's often enough that, you know, we, we get to see that, and I think it's in the direction of the request from, from Harold. So I guess I think that's a reasonable compromise for all parties. So I'd be amenable to that myself.
I also feel, Mark, just to kind of follow up on that, I, I feel the same, and on those years where there's not a 360, it gives us plenty of opportunity to reach out ourselves to department heads to ask for personal feedback, whether that's over a cup of coffee or something like that. If you're, if you want part of your evaluation to have department head feedback, then, you know, on those off-years, that would take it, that would kind of put it on your shoulders. That's what I would suggest.
So, Mr. Mayor, my motion would be to approve the five-year contract beginning at the end of December, so it'd extend to December 28th of 2028, and to have the 360 evaluation done every other year beginning in 2025.
I'd second that.
No, you're okay. Is there any further discussion?
So just, just to confirm, the 360 evaluation would then occur in the year 2025, and if it's going to occur every other year, it would be 2027, and then there would not be an evaluation for year 2028. So year 2025 and 2027 would be the years that 360 evaluations would be administered.
And then there would be just a council evaluation, the other years?
Yes. A council evaluation every year.
Right.
Right? And then the 360 evaluation would be, do you want us to include terms that we would reach out to community stakeholders?
Yes, I think that's nice, and then that gives us a little bit of time with us not having evaluation until 2025 to get that accomplished.
And I think having a 360 evaluation coming up on his last year of the next five years, I think that's a, I think that timing is pretty good. Yes, Steve?
Yeah, I'm kind of the accountability hawk here, but I'm okay with that, and partly because of the feedback we're getting from the current evaluation, which describes Mr. Stewart generally as being very respectful of people and willing to listen and being open-minded and not playing favorites at all and, and being objective. I mean, that's the overwhelming consensus of the people who filled out the forms, so that gives you more confidence. And if, especially if the council has an evaluation every year, I think that's the important thing. We're the employer, and I'm willing to sacrifice some, some precision or some data from, from subordinates. So I'm okay with this.
Steph?
How would you like to identify which community stakeholders receive the evaluation?
About the ones that are specified in the job description?
Did we have, yeah, we had a second, a motion in a second. Let's call the rule.
Olson?
Yes.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Erlingame?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to personal appearances, this is the time, if you have anything to discuss or in front of the city council, now is your time to come up to the dais and...
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. My name is Bobby Waddell, and I just want to say thank you for letting me speak to you this evening. I'm going to be speaking on the motorcycle vehicle accident that took place on 40th Avenue Southwest and South Broadway. I'm not going to mention the victim's name just because I am not here on behalf of the family, and I do want to respect their privacy. What I would like to say is it was a friend of mine, and I would like to hold up... I don't come here with statistics of accident reports, fatalities at that area. What I do come wanting to let you know is after it was made public in the media for that accident, what I did read in the comments was a lot of feedback from people on social media stating that area is terrible. When is enough going to be enough? Nobody pays attention at 40th Avenue pulling out from Walmart. That shouldn't be a left turn lane. It should be a right turn only. Even more personal feedback of people saying, I came across that accident, it looked terrific. My husband picked up his boots laying in the ditch. All of this affected me greatly, you know, because it is someone that I knew. A lot of times we don't tend to get involved in things until they do affect us personally, and that's why I'm here tonight. This one affected me personally. And I, please forgive me if I do get a little emotional. But when we have an intersection literally two, two blocks away with protected double left turn lanes, for those who are wanting to head north on Broadway, I don't see the absolute necessity of 40th Avenue being a required left turn, especially as they are accelerating and they are getting ready to head out of town. I think a lot of people would be in agreeance that most aren't obeying your designated speed limit in that. Your 40 mile an hour are going 40 to 50. They're seeing the 60. They're getting ready for the 70. You also have those people who are trying to get out of 40th Avenue heading north, who want to avoid the stoplight for what I may add would maybe be five seconds of convenience instead of hitting the other two exits outside of Walmart to, like I already mentioned, the protected double left turn lanes at the intersection on 37th Avenue. I want to bring up the history of 16th Street, and I don't know if everybody in here remembers the deaths of those who were pedestrians crossing to get to the mall on 16th Street across Highway 2. And because of that tragedy, we now have the 16th Street overpass to head to the south end of town there. We have a fatality here that has affected me, that has affected many people in and around the community, along with a family that I hold dear to my heart. And I just come to the council and to the mayor tonight asking you, when you are looking at your new budget proposal, I understand that Highway 83 and Broadway is a North Dakota DOT situation, but 40th Avenue Southwest does fall in the limits of the city. We also have traffic that does walk across the highway to get to and from Walmart because of the expanded residential area that has been developed over the years and the decades in Southwest Minot. We have the apartment complexes to the south of Minot Automotive, also along with the trailer park back there, and also the new housing developments closer to the Country Club. That's only going to increase over time. People are crossing at 40th Avenue to avoid the stoplight intersection at 37th Avenue. And it is, in my opinion, that it's only a matter of time before we then have a pedestrian accident and not just a motorcycle vehicle accident due to someone trying to shoot the gap as we... the gap, as we say, to head north. I don't want to take up too much time, because I am sure that there are people here who would also like to speak. But as you do approach your budget, I do ask you, please, remember, my friend, and if at all possible, right-hand turn only, because this was a tragedy that did not have to happen. All they had to do was use the stoplight that's already provided. So I do plead with you to address 40th Avenue Southwest in honor of my friend. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there anybody, anybody else who wishes to address the council? Steve?
I guess in terms of what this individual mentioned, I think it's only fair to ask staff to provide the kind of response if they can at this point. I don't know if the accident is still under investigation or what, but if we could get some preliminary feedback from the police chief and the traffic engineer, I'd appreciate it. I think it'd only be fair to the, to the speaker to get something today on the record.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I guess I don't have the outcome of the full investigation. We did have North Dakota Highway Patrol assist us with that and conduct a reconstruction of the accident. I just got back from being out of town for a week, so just trying to get back in touch with everything that's happened while I've been gone. But I know this area basically from 20th Avenue Southwest, and through that area is one of the areas that have been presented. I think Mr. Meyer, Myers presented it two years ago, that that corridor is under study. So, you know, part of that, it takes time for DOT to do that process. Every one of the, these incidents, whether it's a, a minor damage crash that reaches the capacity for us to do a, a crash report, all of that data is used by DOT for making decisions on what kind of adjustments should be made. So like the person said, when somebody got struck at 16th Street, eventually enough of those incidents pile up, and that's why you see the changes out by the truck stops, the, the area over on, I guess, all along that 2 and 52 corridor, they've made all those changes to try to prevent those crossing crashes. So, you know, unfortunately, that study is still in place. Those, those processes take time, and then the funding has to come with that. And it is unfortunate that, that somebody lost a life.
Just to make sure I understand, the, the person was on a motorcycle, and they were northbound on Broadway, and they made a left turn onto 40th Avenue, and they were struck. Is that what happened?
No, the, the motorcycle was southbound on Broadway, and the vehicle tried to, was exiting Walmart, going eastbound.
Oh, they were going across the intersection?
Yes. They were going, going to make a left turn to go north on Broadway.
Broadway.
So they had to cross the southbound lanes. And that's, they, they didn't make it all the way across, and they were, they were struck by the motorcycle.
And the official Highway Patrol investigation is not completed yet?
I haven't seen it. If it is complete, I just haven't seen it since I've been back.
Okay.
But I'll check on that.
And, and I don't know if this would be more you or the traffic engineer, but, and just for the citizens' information, I mean, we did a, a very extensive study of that whole Broadway corridor, and it's going to take many years to improve, and million, tens of millions of dollars and, and everything. But I guess I'd like to know if we have any accident data on that intersection, and if, just for the sake of the public and the, the person who came here, if, if the engineering people could give us a brief overview of what, what the status is of that intersection and remodeling the whole roadway. Thank you for what you provided, though. Any other questions?
Thank you. Mark?
I don't have a question for the chief, but I was just going to mention that I was a representative on the Broadway corridor study, and there's, you know, all kinds of engineering that's, that's been done on that with future alternatives. It's going to take, as, as you stated, it's going to take some years and expense to, to redo that corridor. In, you know, in the meantime, maybe there's something that our traffic engineer could offer at, you know, to, to make things at least a little bit better. I mean, clearly, you know, somebody was going to go north, they pulled out the southbound motorcycle, you know, couldn't stop. I mean, that, that's essentially what you get from the little bit that we know from the, the news. And so, but hopefully, hopefully the traffic engineer could at least give us some data as to, you know, what kind of incidents there have been at that intersection.
Lance?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Padraig Gula, we have looked at some of the preliminary data for that intersection. Stefan has drawn up a, a couple of different options, one of them being, I guess we could call it a, a soft, no-left turn, where it'd be pavement marking, some delineators, and some pavement grooving. We're working through, through that with the DOT to see if that's something that they would entertain. To do this the right way, to make this a, what we call a three-quarter access intersection, so something you'd see like by homesteaders and, and a valley sport marine that the DOT had just done, as an example. We don't have enough room in the intersection as it's currently constructed, so we would have to rebuild that intersection completely to fit all the medians in. So that project is, well, it seems simple, is a pretty major undertaking, which is why we have requested the Broadway reconstruction project move ahead with the DOT. We asked for that project in 2026, but unfortunately, because of their funding constraints, they weren't able to fund that. So when the solicitation comes out here later in the year, that is our number-one priority, and we will get a request to the DOT. 28, 29, something like that. But Stefan might be able to address the, the actual traffic data numbers. If, if we don't have those offhand, then we can certainly get those to you.
So you're basically saying that a definitive solution would probably take until 2029 and require extensive engineering and close coordination of engineering and construction and funding, especially the funding part with the state?
That's correct. And because it's on a, a federal highway, we'd have to go through the environmental clearances and processes and things to, to make improvements to that, that highway, which we're prepared to do, but we have to program that in with the DOT.
I'm sorry?
We have to program that in with the DOT.
Right.
We can get you some traffic numbers.
I guess accident data would be...
Yes, correct.
Yeah, right. And could we see that that's forwarded to the individual who spoke today?
Certainly, we can certainly do that. Just, just an FYI, we do collect, we actually request it from the DOT, crash data on a yearly basis. So we have that as of right now through December 31st of last year, for the past five years of the whole city. So we do analyze that periodically as well.
So that could be furnished to all of us and, and the constituent fairly soon then?
Correct.
Okay. I guess one comment I'd like to make, and I don't mean to be indifferent or callous, but one of the things I've learned in working with this traffic engineer and previous engineers is that what seems like a logical solution to a problem to a layperson may not, and actually there's a risk of making things worse. And as much as I've wanted to see things done, or things that I think would help, I've learned that, that may not be the solution. And that if we're going to be doing this, we need to do it right. I mean, obviously, we need to be responsive to, to accidents. And I know the, the city, the, the traffic engineers regularly brought us a problem intersections and asked for improvements in signage, or control devices, or things like that. So they do really keep track of this stuff. They do really pay attention to what's happening out there. The unfortunate thing is that sometimes we can't control crashes, I don't want to call them accidents, we can't control crashes. And then unfortunately, for some of these roads, because they are state and federally funded, our hands are pretty much tied. Now, I, I think we need to be open-minded, and, and maybe if we can't come up with a definitive resolution, there's something we can do, kind of in the interim. And I, and I would encourage staff to think that through. But I just wanted to reassure you, ma'am, that, you know, from my experience, staff generally does pay a lot of attention to this, and they try hard. And, you know, sometimes horrible things happen. And unfortunately, you know, the solution sometimes isn't really what it appears to be, and it, it may take a lot longer than any of us want. I mean, that's just the reality of it when you're dealing with the state and federal government in particular. I feel very badly about what happened. You know, my heart goes out to you and the family. I'm a clinical psychologist. I work extensively with people who've been through traumatic events, including automobile accidents. So I, I know a little bit professionally what that's like. And again, I feel for you, and I, I have confidence in the city staff being on top of these kinds of things and doing what they can. And I think Lance has just promised us today that they've tried to do what they can to expedite the reconstruction. And we'll, we'll just kind of keep our fingers crossed.
Thank you, Steve. Scott?
Lance, you did briefly mention that there, there might be some soft options. I, I mean, as I sit here, and obviously, it's, it's going to take a bigger process to put in curves and, and things like that, but can we put up signs, like no-left turns? Or can we put up paint? Or what can we do? Is there, is there less expensive, quicker alternatives than waiting 2000 until 2029?
Mr. Mayor and Alderman Burlingame, yes. That's, that's what we were talking about. So what Stefan has done so far is, is drawn up some exhibits that would, we'd call that a soft, no-left turn, where it's, it's delineators, plastic delineators that go into the pavement. It'd be pavement striping, it'd be trying to make it look like there's a median there without physically putting the median in. The hope is that that would then control the folks that want to take a, a eastbound to a northbound left turn. If they wanted to make that movement, they could go south 1,200 feet, there's an approach there, they could make a U-turn and then come back north. Or probably the quicker option is just to go, if you're at the, you know, the shopping center, you just go to 37th Avenue and, and get to the signal. So we have some options there, but before we can proceed with anything, we need to talk through the DOT, make sure they're on board with it, and then we'd look at what we have in our budget, and, and work through that, and have something installed if we can.
Sure. Well, if you could keep us informed about that, and if there's anything we can do to help with that process, I would definitely look forward to doing that.
Certainly do that.
Thanks, Lance.
You're welcome.
Okay. If there is no other personal appearances, we will move on to item number 10 on the agenda that's miscellaneous and discussion items. And item 10.1 is informational about the My, MyMyNot app and GIS update.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm Emily Hiddle, Assistant City Engineer. Hopefully, I just wanted to take the opportunity tonight to give you guys a quick update for our council and for the public on an ongoing software project that we've been working on, as a part of the larger overall project with our asset management program, which is currently up and running, and our soon-to-be up-and-running online permitting program. We also had citizen request management software, and we're ready to, to show you guys that here tonight. We have an app called MyMyNot. From the city website, you can do a direct link by clicking on the MyMyNot app, or there's a couple other ways to get there. If you click "I want to report a concern," there's a few different ways. Basically, this is a landing page to tell you a little more about the app, quick links to get to it in the Apple Store and Google Play. Also, you don't have to use it as an app on a, on a phone or device. You can just use it on a desktop computer, which is what I have pulled up here. So basically, this is a way for citizens to report concerns to the city. They're automatically routed to the correct department based on what the item is. So that's helpful for people who don't know necessarily who to reach out to for different things. A few things I would caution people on, you know, we're routinely monitoring this system during regular business hours. So nights, weekends, holidays, you know, this is not where you submit an urgent issue. So if there's, you know, a hydrant, fire hydrant shooting water everywhere, if there's, you know, a crime happening, things like that, you're still needing to call central dispatch, call 911 if you're in an emergency situation. Do not submit those things online or through the app. But basically, on here, you can either create an account for yourself with your email address, which is going to be beneficial so that we can respond to you. Basically, it opens up that line of communication. So if we have follow-up questions about your concern, or if you just want to hear from us to know the status of if we've addressed it, or, or what's going on, it would be helpful to have an account so we can communicate back and forth with you. However, that's not required. You can submit them anonymously as well. So here on the main screen, there's just some quick links back to some other pages. Down here in the center, these little tools says requests. This is where you would create your service request. It's going to pop open, like I said, this page where you can log in to your account, or you can just hit create anonymously. It's going to prompt you with kind of different topics of things that you might be requesting, or if you don't know, you could start putting something in, start typing a word, and you get choices. So maybe, maybe there's a street light that's out on your block, you're going to click on the map to open that up, type in an address, or if you're on a mobile device, it can just geolocate you and put a pin where you're at, tell us more details, attach photos, which is really helpful for, for some of the things. If you're trying to explain to us something that you're seeing going on, and you're not sure how to explain it, attach a picture, it's worth a thousand words. So the last thing on here is check the box if you want to keep your request private, that is, private from other residents being able to see it. Basically, if they're not private, they're, they'll be in a list where other people can see them, which does help us to, like, weed out duplicates. You might have entered in an address for a pothole. The system is going to prompt you to say, hey, someone reported a pothole here two days ago, is this the same one? Filters those out. But if you're more comfortable having the general public not see it, click that box. And then, as it says below, to remain completely anonymous from city staff, make sure you're logged out, and you're, and you're doing that, submit anonymously. So that's just how you would do that. And then if you're logged in, you'll get updates that say if it's in progress, or if we've handled it, a response back to you of what that is. That's really, that's really the service request in a very quick summary, because I want to keep it short for you all tonight. And then the other item that we wanted to touch on, when we updated the city website recently, we also switched over our GIS map and updated that. So if you, if you had bookmarked the tab before, now if you go there, you'll get a little message that says redirect and, and save this new link. So in the GeoHub here, you'll see our most popular maps up at the top, which are ones that you're probably familiar with. What's different is now we're in the process of building out pages specific to different departments, where you can dive into some more detailed information. If we click on the traffic department, it has the traffic impact map... If we click on the traffic department, it has the traffic impact map that we're used to. It also has load restriction, hazardous materials, speed limits, some different details. Another new feature is down at the bottom, people are able to select this data and download it for their own use if they have a need to do that. So the same information from our previous GIS site, just adding more information and a little bit better organized. I wanted to keep that really short. I would answer any questions, and certainly if you guys all have time later and you dig into these websites, if you have any questions, please reach out to us.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Steve?
Just some feedback. This looks pretty, and it looks very informative, and it's marked improvement from what we had before in terms of how the information is presented and how people can access it. I'll be playing with this on stormy nights and seeing what the capabilities are. But this is a very important, very good first step, or in the first step additional step to our greater accountability and transparency.
Thank you. Anyone else? Scott?
How are you letting people know about this? I mean, just assuming not everybody's watching a city council meeting at 8:56 on a Monday night. How is everybody else, you know, the dozens of people not doing that finding out?
Yeah, you know, that's an excellent question. Alderman Burlingame, Mayor Ross, you know, we actually quietly switched this link on the website a couple months ago. So, I mean, so some people have noticed and are using it. We've kind of did sort of a soft rollout to get our staff all used to using the software. So tonight was kind of our first public display of it, so we'll see who's on there, and then, you know, we'll continue to work with the PIO and getting the link out to people. If you have any other ideas of ways you'd like it shared, we would certainly like to do that.
Any other questions? Comments? Nothing? Thank you. Thank you. Is there anything else for item 10 miscellaneous discussion from the council? If not, we can move on to item number 11, and that is adjournment. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.